All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council regular meeting for Monday, February 19th. There were no study session items for tonight. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take a roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Protem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, this is consideration of the minutes from the previous session. Any changes to the minutes from the regular City Council meeting of February 5? See, now can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on February 5?
Move to approve minutes from February 5th to 2024.
Thank you, Member Prang. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, we have a couple of appointments and communications for tonight in recognition of board and commission members. First up, I want to recognize Erin Bartlett, who is the Public Outreach and Marketing Specialist for here within the city, and just want to recognize her for the significant contribution advancing projects here within the city's strategic plan. So the city would like to recognize Public Outreach and Marketing Specialist Erin Bartlett for her significant contribution in advancing projects in the city's strategic plan. Erin has achieved significant milestones during her two-year tenure at South Platte Renew. One of her notable accomplishments includes promoting SPR through television interviews and showcasing the organization's initiatives and projects, excuse me, her involvement in various projects such as river cleanup and oil takeback reflects her commitment to environmental sustainability. Beyond these initiatives, Erin has played a pivotal role in organizing events like the SPR Water Festival and coordinating SPR's involvement at Inglewood's Neighborhood Nights, contributing to community engagement and awareness. Her dedication to promoting safety through planet tours aligns with, excuse me, with plant, plant, excuse me, plant tours aligns with SPR's value of safety and commitment to responsible exploration. Notably, Erin has been instrumental in enhancing SPR's online presence. She has taken the initiative to create a more accessible web environment for the organization's website, ensuring inclusivity and ease of access for all users. Additionally, Erin actively promotes SPR on professional platforms like LinkedIn, fostering connections and expanding the organization's reach. Her multifaceted contributions spanning community engagement, environmental initiatives, safety advocacy, digital accessibility, and strategic promotion has significantly enriched the community and elevated SPR's standing. Congratulations to Erin Bartlett on her recognition for significant contributions in advancing projects within the city's strategic plan. Erin, sorry for me for fumbling through that, but if you could please come up and we'd like to just recognize you for your contributions to the city. Thank you so much, Erin. We're going to the second item. This is the Board and Commission Member Appointment Recognition. City Clerk Carlisle, will you be reading the names for the new appointments to the boards and commissions? And I'll come up front. And Sarah, you could be handing out. Perfect. All right, so I'll come up and we'll take a picture as well.
All right, welcome. For Board and Adjustments and Appeals, Coleen Dickerson. Gina Azols. And Adam Cox. For the Budget Advisory Committee, Nevin Mandell. Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, Eric Johnson. And Linda Hart. Cultural Arts Commission, Carolina Johnson. Inglewood Housing Authority, Lynn Peterson. Inglewood Transportation Advisory Committee, Jacob Somerson. Firefighter Pension Board, Chris Gushen Ritter, was I close? Okay. Historic Preservation Commission, Joseph Fragola. Non-emergency Retirement Pension Board, Chris. Parks and Recreation Commission, Catherine Sturtevant. Kathleen Hammer. Chris Lambert. And Laura Herrera. Planning and Zoning Commission, Brenda Hubka. Eric Montiel. Steven Rudel Lopez. Noah Kaplan. Police Pension Board, Chris Gushen Ritter. Public Library Board, Marie Hoda. Andy Siskeris. Edie Hughes. Gina Olberding. And Maggie Burns. Sustainability Commission, Christine Brinker. Tiana Duncan. And Elizabeth Shaw. Water and Sewer Board, Travis Ridley. Marjean Freeman. And Kami Joel.
All right, everyone, we're moving on to recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 p.m. prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner, and council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please let me your presentation to five minutes tonight. Member Ward, you're giving response to public comment, correct? All right. And first off is Mr. Chris.
I'm trying to think of how to pronounce the last name now. Cordova? Cordova, Cordova. Sorry about that. Will address council regarding the standards of behaviors policy. Good evening. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets. I always forget that. Okay, we good? Okay, my name is Christopher Cordova. I'm not going to give my address, and I would just like to thank all of you. If you had anything to do with the bodily hygiene policy and facilitating that, that has been removed. I wouldn't know who had any involvement in it. None of you guys reached out to me. I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Anderson the first time I was here. But I just spoke with Mr. Lewis, and he informed me that they're getting rid of a lot of stuff on here, which is great news. Possessions of garbage, I believe, is going to be gotten rid of. Seems like a non-issue. And a couple of other things. I got some clarification, and here's the thing, like, if I could speak to somebody, it would be more productive than me trying to come up here and cram everything in five minutes over the course of two months. But I am appreciative of this happening. So I got some clarification on the clothing covering the upper body. So it just says covering the upper body. To me, that means belly button showing is not acceptable. So Mr. Lewis said that as long as it's covered, that's fine. That's all that I was asking for. Now, just briefly, CRS 18-7-301 states that if a person is to expose an intimate part of the body other than the genitals, it's only illegal if they do it with the intent to arouse another. So just want to throw that out there in case somebody wants to be topless, a woman. I'm not condoning that, but in a city park, I've seen people a couple of years ago at the abortion protests, and they were topless, and there's police everywhere. Nobody did anything about that. So but, Mr. Lewis, you're wondering about the public urination thing. So last time you said that that's not actually illegal to urinate in a hallway of a city facility. And so you had to put it in the standards of behavior, therefore you could have a reason to trespass someone. And my argument was, first of all, how many people are actually urinating in a public hallway? And you informed me that actually it's happened, and I'm assuming that it has happened, otherwise it wouldn't be here. But if somebody is going to urinate in a hallway of a public facility when there's a perfectly good restroom available to them, that means they're mentally ill, right? So Mr. Lewis's idea of handling that is to criminalize them and lock them in a cage or have them criminally trespassed. That's not fixing the issue. I think we should allocate our resources in a much more effective way. How about we get them help? And as Regan has been saying for years, that Inglewood is orchestrating an attack on the homeless. And I say homeless because homeless suffer from mental illness at a higher rate than the non-homeless. So we have disruptive activity behavior voices. Apparently, I think that's loud voices. It also does say in here that vulgar language promoted to provoke a fight. Now, Mr. Lewis informed me, I said, hey, I can curse in a city hall, though, right? And he said, no, because there's, I guess, a CRS that prevents that. I think what you're referring to, Mr. Lewis, is the disorderly conduct, CRS. Now, disorderly conduct, you have to incite violence with your speech, but we can curse in here. There's nothing you guys can do about that. So it says right on here, to promote or provoke a fight, which would be disorderly conduct. But Mr. Lewis did inform me that we can't curse in here, and so that's absolutely not true. And, Mr. Mayor, every time you come and you say, hey, public comment is expected that it's going to be conducted with respect, and I've been respectful, but I don't have to. I choose to. So let's refer to the 1971 case of Cohen versus California, landmark case where the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that Paul Robert Cohen is not guilty of disorderly conduct for walking into the corridor of a California courthouse with a jacket on that read, "Fuck the draft." That's constitutionally protected speech. And the thing is, is that respectful speech doesn't need to be protected. Offensive speech does. And this is what I mean when I say the government can't follow their own rules. So if somebody comes up here and they're redressing their government, you guys have to understand that people are going to be emotional and passionate about things, and that's okay. And you guys signed up to be subject to public scrutiny. And we're not in a kindergarten classroom. We're all adults here. If the F-bomb slips every now and then, you shouldn't want to do anything about that. But I am appreciative of what's happened. And basically, what this is, is it's questioning authority. And some people don't like Ms. Benson and I because we question authority, because people think you should just bow down because the government's good for you. But that's a slap in the face to every American who gave the ultimate sacrifice to create the freedom we have, and it's barely hanging on by a string. And if a few guys named Jefferson, Washington, and Madison didn't question authority, we wouldn't even have a country. And questioning authority is the most American thing you can do.
Thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Cordova. Any questions? Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. My, one of my questions, my question is actually a follow-up on something you said last time about pornography viewing. Do you believe pornography viewing should be allowed in our public library?
I don't condone it, but I do believe that it's unconstitutional. Yeah, you can't prohibit that. Did you see the video last time or explained it all?
No.
So essentially, there's.
That's all I needed, is whether you think it should be allowed or not. Appreciate it.
It's unconstitutional.
Any further questions for members of council? Sina, Mr. Cordova, thank you. Thank you for your. Do you have your light off? Oh, no. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Cordova.
It's actually, I'm sorry.
Actually, Mr. Cordova, there is a question. Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. I agree, and I strongly believe in the Constitution. Five minutes is not a lot of time. There are often people that do speak, but they follow up to City Council with email with their thoughts and their ideas. Have you thought about doing that yourself?
I've reached out to Mr. Lewis, and I asked him to, I gave him the whole email. Asked you guys to review that email. I hope you did, because there's still more stuff. This is great, and I'm very appreciative of what's happened so far, but I would like to get your guys' input on the email that I sent him. And I asked you, Mr. Lewis, to respond to me. You haven't responded to me back on that email. So but I will reach out to you guys. You guys, I don't know your email. I could find it very easily. Takes about a minute to find. I think I have it actually in all my videos, but if you would like me to, Ms. Wright, I can email you.
Yes, please do, because I think part of this solution is come to problems, and also if you have ideas with solutions would be great. So thank you.
I will email you then.
Thank you.
So no further questions. Thanks for your time tonight. Up next is Marsha McGilly, the Executive Director of the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center, here to address council regarding the Small Business Annual Economic Update.
She's joining us virtually.
Okay. I was gonna say, I didn't see her in the room.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for your time. My name again is Marsha McGilly. I'm the Executive Director of the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center.
One second.
And I come to speak with you all about the highlights of our strategic partnership.
Within council chambers, so.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me? Testing, testing, one, two. Testing. Can you hear me? Hello? Hello? Testing, testing. Can they hear me?
Should we go on to the next speaker and then come back to Ms. McGilly while we work on the audio?
Testing, testing, one, two.
Is that okay? Sarah, we're gonna go to the next speaker and then come back to Ms. McGilly after. So up next is Gary Kozak, here to address Inglewood, here to address council regarding, actually, there's no topic given. Yeah, they had to switch the format. There we go.
There is no sound to it.
Perfect. Mr. Kozak.
Gary Kozak, Inglewood, Colorado, Oxford and La Pan Street. The picture here is Oxford and La Pan Street. I'm on La Pan Street trying to get onto Oxford. This was as of Wednesday at 5:34 p.m., Wednesday afternoon. This has taken us back to the before COVID era and the traffic. It happens to be starting now to be this kind of traffic. I want to ask the City Council, has they directed the city staff to go ahead and do a third-party study on the traffic involved that we had asked for during the Sam's Automotive? Now, changing subject, the roundabouts on Dartmouth. The Denver Fire Department has now put a moratorium on all Denver streets that they can no longer put roundabouts. And we happen to have the Denver Fire Department working for us. So was anybody questioned and had the Fire Department Chief come up and talk to you about it? Oh, wait a minute. One of them are gonna be right over by a hospital. One of these people out here have an emergency, and they're being rushed to the hospital, and it takes an extra 30 seconds to go around, or an extra minute or two minutes to take a detour because that ambulance can't get around that roundabout. That person's life is in risk. Oh, wait, it doesn't stop there. It's the same thing with police cars. They can't go around that as fast. And if there's a shooting going on, which we all happen to see that, that there's a mass shooting more than once a day in this state this year, the roundabouts are gonna slow that traffic. Dartmouth is a designated, a state-designated truck route. We only have four east-west corridors. Dartmouth, Camden. We only have four east-west corridors, Dartmouth, Hampden, Oxford, and Bellevue. So if you take 25% of truck traffic and commercial traffic and push it somewhere else, where's it gonna go? To Hampden? Oh, wait a minute. Here shows you where it's going. When Hampden Avenue gets jammed up at 5 o'clock in rush hour, they go over to Oxford. Right in front of the rec center, right at the time the kids are going over to the rec center. Great, we don't even have a crosswalk at the rec center. Think about it. Now, on your boards and directors, all right, we have the sunshine law. Everybody's supposed to abide by it. You take an oath on it, and your boards and commissions are not even following by it, as well as this one right here. You realize you guys are conducting an illegal meeting? This is a national holiday, and by your own code of ethics, as well as state law, governments are not supposed to be operating right now, other than your police and your fire, your emergency stuff. So you're already in violation of that, and if you call it a special meeting, wait a minute, we go back to the sunshine law, a special meeting that has been called for is only allowed to have one subject, and you guys violated that several times, pushing through your ordinance on the building and stuff. And it was supposed to go back to the planning and zoning, and you didn't do it, you didn't even make a motion to waive that right, you just went ahead and pushed it through. Your last one that you put over right at the first of the year, or right at the end Now, as far as Mr. Othaniel getting reimbursed, we're all paying his cost to defend himself on a recourse. Well, go ahead, do it, but remember, you've got other council members that have had legal issues before, and the same body didn't even bother to want to pursue that. So you're opening up a Pandora's box, and that other council person should be entitled to the money that they had to spend on legal fees. Now, I just heard out here, lead pipes in the house? You're gonna pass a bill that's gonna allow you guys to come into my house and determine if my pipes are lead or not, and I have no rights to stop you? I will take you constitutionally, and I will hang you on it. You still got pipes out there that are from the street to the house that are lead pipes. And I know you're working on it, but one member, former council member, had applied for that funding, and it took him almost a year to get it done. Yeah, they approved it, and then it didn't get it done, didn't get it done, didn't get it done. Real question to that. Oh, and by the way, congratulations to all the new members. I was on there as well. I've lived here all my life, I've served on city council, and I've served on boards and commissions, and I tend to look like age discrimination.
Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Your five minutes are up. Any questions for Mr. Kozak? Go ahead, Member Russell, and then Member Wright.
So this video that's going, was that traffic going on that long?
That's continuous for over six minutes.
Thank you.
Member Wright, go ahead.
Let me say, what time was this?
It was at, I got it written down here.
5:34.
5:34 PM on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
It's right during your rush hour, and this is what we get now.
And then, I noticed that the vehicle that you were recording from, you left from, you said La Panne and Oxford?
Yep, and I only went one block up to Jason.
And what street is this on now, then? Where you finished?
Where I started right here is La Panne and Oxford, and where you see the end of it, as I drove up and turned left on Jason Street and got out of the car and continued to video it, and this is the time that the Metal Gold Dairy does not have their 2,000 vehicles coming in and out.
Okay.
So we've got that in the odd hours, but this is what we've got right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak.
Perfect, thank you.
Member, Mayor Potem.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kozak. My question is on the video, is this to illustrate that the cars are on the street? Are they going too fast? What's?
Well, we always have them going too fast. You used to always have...
What are we, what is the video illustrating?
The video is showing you that I was up here for my five minutes, and that went on for over six minutes.
There was traffic, cars going down the street for six minutes.
Backed all the way up onto the hill, okay? And how about the people wanting to get on and off, the people trying to get into the rec center and get out of the rec center?
Okay.
Okay? It's a traffic jam, and I asked way back on the Sam's Automotive.
That's all, thank you, thank you. You've answered my question.
Mr. Kozak, thank you for your time. Member Russell, go ahead.
So I would just like to ask, the real point of the video was because of the traffic study you asked for, is that correct or not?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, so, no further questions. Mr. Kozak, thanks for your time tonight. All right, and do we have Ms. McGilly ready to go?
I just got word that she's gonna plan to speak at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, so...
Oh, Marsha, are you there? Okay.
Testing, testing, one, two. Can you hear me?
And see if we can get it to play.
Can you hear me?
If you want.
Well, if we're gonna have technical difficulties trying to get audio from her, then I think we...
Sounds good.
If she's okay postponing until March 5th or whatever it is.
Okay.
We can wait till then.
Thank you.
Member Russell, do you have a?
I just have a question, are we having audio difficulties in the video recording, the live stream?
I think it's just for the people speaking.
We got reports that people watching could hear as well. It was just in council chambers that there wasn't a sound.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, City Clerk, and thanks for the question, Member Russell. And with that, that concludes scheduled public comment. We believe we have one or two unscheduled public comment. Same rules apply, but you are limited to three minutes. First is Regan Benson with no topic given. Good evening, Ms. Benson.
Good evening, Council Regan Benson, Helping Hands for Dignity Coalition. I'm speaking on behalf of my official capacity tonight, as executive director for a nonprofit that does direct street outreach with the homeless. But the caveat this evening is, Mr. Lewis, I'm very appreciative of the response you offered up today via email, and I know all of council was copied on that, and I responded again on that. And this document that you're getting right now is an addendum to the document that I served the city on Friday, asking for the release of that body cam footage. Mr. Ward, thank you for putting in a council request on the question of why three hours of body cam footage would cost a citizen $600 to see. Your cops do a wonderful job over here in Inglewood. Let's see what they're doing. You guys have a very serious problem brewing with this release of body cam. And to add insult to injury, I went back over to the PD today to do another request for body cam footage, and was told, oh, no, go away. You gotta email somebody now. You guys have got to get a grip on this police department running a completely inept and inefficient records department. You're going to get sued. Bless you. Please, councils start asking some serious questions. So I do expect that body cam footage to be released of that very serious incident that EPD is now claiming an officer was assaulted. You certainly need the public's help in finding this individual. Release that body cam footage, there's no more ongoing investigation. In my official capacity tonight, I have a friend, his name is Robert. Robert lives homeless in Inglewood. He's been cited for your behavior standards contract today by Inglewood PD, and he's been banned from every park in Inglewood for 45 days for smoking a cigarette. Shaun, it's not okay. You wrote that, and you are empowering these cops to go out and act like tyrannical fools. And they're getting caught on camera doing it, and they're looking very stupid. And this is why we don't want to see that body cam footage. You are not going to criminalize and harass people out of homelessness, Inglewood. Get a grip. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson, for your time. Member Wright has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am. When was Mr. Robert banned from?
This morning.
Okay. City manager or city attorney? Do we have a?
Point of order, this time for questions.
Yeah, so just questions for now, and then we can ask for additional information after response.
What park?
Little Dry Creek is where it initiated. Why don't you just close the damn place? Forever. Bulldoze it.
Any other questions, Member Wright?
So many, but I...
And we could communicate via email. I write to you all the time.
Yes, yeah, we will have to, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
It's, Ms. Benson, can I ask one more? On this, I, what were the dates that you were asking for other body?
I didn't get that far because they didn't take my request.
Okay.
But they are separate incidences to that.
Right, so, so you have put in multiple requests for, um, for body footage, correct?
Not since that request, I have not.
Okay, so in...
But I tried to today.
Okay, in the past have you, and have you received it?
Yes.
You have received the footage?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson, for your time. Up next, I can't read the writing, is it Robert, was it Robert that's coming up and speaking? Mr. Robert, if you want to come up and, if you could just state your name and your address across streets.
My name's Robert Stocker.
Stocker, okay.
I didn't find that I would be homeless at this point in time. I had some health issues, I have cancer. I had a heart attack and a stroke in the same month, so it led me to where I am today. But I didn't think that me organizing my stuff to take an inventory of what's been missing, and what's, what I have, and that kind of, that's, you know, you know, like IDs and wallets and stuff like that, that's all I was doing. And every cop that I have been coming in contact with has said, Mr. Stocker, you are, you know, very honorable, we never have any problems with you. And I portrayed myself that way. I didn't expect to be banned from a park just because I was organizing my stuff. I just, I think it's ludicrous. And then, to put note on that, he says that, I mentioned that, wow, you, having police involvement, I have things that I'm trying to do so that I can get out of homelessness, as in getting a job. And I said, wow, if I have police contact, that omits me from the job I'm going for. And he said, oh, well. That didn't make any sense to me. I thought they were here to protect and serve. I don't, I, I, I'm flabbergasted. Now, I clean up, I know that some homeless people, they're just ruthless. I understand that. I know you, we have a problem with that, but I'm not one of them. I clean up, I often do because I have nowhere to go, because every single building has no trespassing and no loitering. I can't go to the bathroom, except for King Supers, and except I have two outhouses across the street from here, from the police station, and it's just, I, I think that we should be able to go to the bathroom. Talk about public urination? We don't have a choice. We really don't. Every single restaurant I go into, sorry, we have no public restrooms. Sorry, no, 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 can't go in here. The other day, I had a friend loan me some money so I could get some pair of gloves. I went into the Armory Surplus store, and they said, you're not welcome here. Now, being, I've been in, just on the other side of Denver, I grew up there, and for them to tell me that, I felt horrified. So I had to have my friend come in and then pay for it. But I went in with him, and they didn't have a problem with that, that person. I just don't get it.
Mr. Stocker, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for coming to speak. Hold on one second, just seeing if there's any questions for members of council. See, no questions, thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Stocker. And that concludes unscheduled public comments. Member Ward, when you are ready, you can give a response.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came and spoke tonight. It is much easier to process what you say when your approach is gentle, at least for me it is. Mr. Cordova, you know, I appreciate your, your comments on the various policies around the city. It is something that we have tasked staff and our city attorney with monitoring. It sounds like there have been some adjustments made. I, for one, you know, even as a staunch supporter of the First Amendment, I think there are some ramifications to some of the things that you're suggesting. The one that Councilmember, Mayor Potem Anderson commented on is the one that strikes me the most definitively. Public viewing of pornography in a place where people who are not at the age required to view pornography are present is disturbing to me as a, as a member of this council, and strikes me as the type of First Amendment complaint that I would be willing to expend city funds to defend. Secondly, Mr. Kozak, I appreciate you bringing any attention to the traffic. I know you live in an area where it's difficult to move around. You know, the video is helpful to see things. As I understand it, and as I was informed, that there was a traffic study done, and it showed what it showed, which was apparently that the development, further development in that area would be safe. You spoke about a couple of other things, moratorium on roundabouts, we're relying on our engineering staff and our policy staff to guide us on what we can or can't do. We've been advised regarding the safety of roundabouts in the past, a question that I've asked about a number of times. We've also been advised that there are methods to allow emergency vehicles to pass through roundabouts easier than regular traffic. I, myself, have been doing a lot of driving around town. I will say, I've concluded that I strongly prefer roundabouts to speed humps, and I find them as effective for calming traffic. So I may be a convert on that, if we can find a way to overcome the way they adversely affect the visually impaired. As far as any violation of the sunshine law is concerned, I would appreciate if you can email me what the statutory reference is for those. I've spent a lot of time reviewing the sunshine law in the course of my professional duties, not familiar with anything that says that we can or can't meet on any specific date, as long as we announce the meeting. So if you have further clarification on that, and we have done something wrong, I'm happy to address it. Ms. Benson, I appreciate that you acknowledged that I was the council member who made the council request regarding your public records request. I've said it 100 times, or at least I feel like I have. The records maintained by the police department belong to the people, as do all government records. That is standing state law in the state of Colorado. This is an area where I seem to have a little bit of a disagreement with certain members of police department staff. Anything we can do as a body to improve the process for obtaining public records from the police department, I would strongly support. I think this may be something that we need to have a study session on, there may be an option for us to add some more directive ordinances in city code. That's something that we need to talk through with the departments that will be affected. But I am a huge, huge supporter of Colorado law regarding public records, and I have seen far, far too many public agencies attempt to obstruct efforts to obtain public records, and I don't want to be a part of that. So as much as we can do to fix the process involving challenges, specifically challenges obtaining police department records, I, I'm a strong advocate of that. I need the approval of three other members of this body to do a study session on that, and I'll be asking for that tonight. And, Mr. Stocker, finally, thank you for coming tonight. We are benefited from hearing experiences all across the board. I hear from my residents and my constituents on a, you know, relatively constant basis about some of the... relatively constant basis about some of the negative impacts that they feel homelessness in the city causes them. And seeing you here as a human being in front of us helps me understand that there is a balance that we need to strike. If what you say actually occurred, and I don't doubt you, I just need to see both sides of what occurred before I can exercise my judgment. If you were indeed stopped and banned for smoking a cigarette in our parks, that is completely unacceptable to me. We have signs posted in all of our parks and green spaces that say, you know, something along the lines of, you know, "Please don't smoke" or something like that. I don't know exactly what they say. They were placed there prior to my council tenure at the request of students at the Inglewood Leadership Academy. And I recall watching that council session where they agreed to place the signs. And at the time, there was a discussion about whether or not this was law. And the council members at the time, the body agreed that it was not indicative of a no smoking in our parks law. I myself have consumed tobacco in our parks since the signs went up. And I will continue to do so. So inasmuch as, you know, I would like to put in a council request for the incident report. If you don't mind, I would also like to see any other reports that involve your name so that we can find out more about you and sort of clarify what the police department action was. If there is some action that this body needs to take as a result of your encounter today, rest assured we will do so. So I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak as a council member, but also a parent, especially in regards to our library. I'm very concerned about what could happen to our library if we eliminate all standards of behavior. I know, especially as things have, challenges have increased around the library, staff, and physical altercations with staff members. But a very challenging time for our library. I have kids, a new baby, all the way to thirteen years old, that utilize our library to find resources. We have kids all over Inglewood who come into our library. And we can either make it a place that is welcoming for kids and families, or we can make it a place that is welcoming for people who want to use pornography or engage in altercations or urination and defecation, use language and other kinds of behaviors. That's the kind of, the future of our library really is what's at stake. And we have all had all of these kinds of challenges. I think it is well within our rights to have a library that these kind of behaviors result in getting temporarily banned from the library for. Absolutely. Want to discourage these kind of behaviors in our library so that we have a library that is welcoming to children, welcoming to families, welcoming to parents. I want to know that my wife can take my eight-year-old, my six-year-old into the library and know that they are not going to see pornography on our computer. Right? That's something we should expect and we should have rules that we enforce because of that. I absolutely believe in that and I defend these rules because I want a safe and welcoming library for our staff and for my children and for the children in Inglewood. And so I'm supporter of these rules. And if there are unconstitutional things in them, as I have, you know, said before, you know, I want to get rid of those things. And happy to get rid of, you know, the body odor thing. But a lot of these standards of behavior are totally appropriate for a library in Inglewood. We have a library board right now with a liaison from the school board who owns websites. This is according to an Inglewood Herald that have the word pornography in them. Porn XXX. You know, what's going to happen if we defend the library, set it up, this is a place where it's free, we're free to look at pornography? And we have library board members who are supportive of that. I don't know if he's supportive of that or not, but that's the kind of person we have on our library board. We have to stand up for it. If we want to have a library that's welcoming to families, we have to stand up for it. So those are my views on the standards of behavior policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments from- Mr. Cordova? Please, your time is, we've given you your time. Thank you for speaking earlier tonight, but- And actually, I'll speak up as well. So, Ms. Benson, I appreciate you coming and speaking tonight regarding some of the injustices that you see within the city. But I do caution you, I do want you to get both sides of the story before you start. Speaking ill about the work of the police department. And you referenced an email that you received from the city manager regarding the incident itself. And I won't go into details, and I know that we're going to be speaking about one aspect of it tonight, or at least Member Ward is going to be speaking about making some of the body cam information available sooner. But in that lengthy email, the city manager did provide some information on the incident itself. And did talk about nineteen different police officers that were involved, nineteen different body cams. So before you speak ill will of the police department in this specific instance, I do, I would like for you, I would like for you to wait until the information comes forth.
You will not sit up there and chastise me. Absolutely not.
Ms. Benson, you've had your time tonight, so just give me my time.
You are not going to sit up there and chastise me.
Members of, Ms. Benson, I will ask you to leave if you don't give me my time to kind of speak my mind on this issue. So, Ms. Benson. Exactly. We will wait for the, we will wait for the facts, Ms. Benson. And that's all I ask. So with that, we'll wait for the information to be released, but I do want you to hold any judgment on the police department until the facts are known. So thank you very much, Ms. Benson. And with that, Mayor Protem, did you have something else to add?
No, thank you.
All right, that concludes unscheduled public comments. And with that, I think we will move just to consent agenda items.
Actually, I would like to address an issue that, and the only reason I haven't addressed it before this is because I wanted to allow the public that came to address us. But this meeting is in violation of our policy manual and of the municipal code. And we were not told, I assumed, I did not sit down to do the packet until Saturday morning. I assumed that it was going to be on Tuesday because always when there is a legal holiday, we don't have the council meeting on Monday. We have it on Tuesday. I emailed the mayor because we were never notified that we were not doing it. In our emails back and forth, it's come to my attention that this decision was made at a leadership level perhaps a year ago and by staff. This council never approved this and it was never notified in the public. This council, whenever there is policy, has the authority to change policy if we want to do it so that the public knows. But because we did not do it, we need to cancel the rest of this meeting or postpone it because this is a legal holiday and we have violated our policy.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem? Did you want to add in?
I would just, I actually to the, I don't agree that we need to cancel the rest of this meeting. But I do happen to agree with Councilmember Russell that we shouldn't be holding meetings on Presidents' Day. But I do want to understand the legal situation behind this, how this change came about and what obligations we have under our code and charter with regards to meeting on Mondays and Tuesdays on holiday.
Go ahead, City Attorney Nals.
Yes, first, I, we are meeting legally and in compliance with applicable law. So our code states that we will meet on the first and third Mondays of the month at 7:00 PM for regular meetings. Except when there is a city-recognized holiday, then it should be held on Tuesday instead. And we had this discussion last year during Juneteenth, around that time when the city had yet to officially recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. And at that time, city staff was surveyed and we negotiated with our collective bargaining units to decide what to do with Juneteenth, how to recognize it. And because we already have the most paid holidays in the metro of any city, is my understanding. So staff didn't feel that it was appropriate that the city get another paid holiday because they were trying to be wise use of taxpayer funds. So the city staff negotiated and negotiated with collective bargaining units and they settled on eliminating Presidents' Day as a city-recognized holiday and instead recognizing Juneteenth. So when, once that happened, it no longer was a city holiday. So that's why we met today. And we did discuss it during the mayor-manager meeting back in November when we were considering, should we hold this meeting as scheduled because it's no longer a city holiday? And it was decided at that time that we would have the meeting as it calls for in municipal code, given it's the first Monday or the third Monday of the month at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, City Attorney Nals. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
It seems to me that council should have some authority over what are holidays within the city of Inglewood. And it sounds like this came about because of negotiations between employee groups and city manager's office. What authority do we have in regards to this?
Municipal code states that the city council can recognize holidays specifically. And it also authorizes or specifically recognizes city council's authority to change the meeting date. And so in the past few years, when city council has decided to hold a meeting date on a date other than the first and third Monday of the month at 7:00 PM or on a Tuesday when it's a city-recognized holiday, we have adopted a resolution setting it for a different day. So if you recall back to Juneteenth, I had recommended that we not hold city council on Juneteenth, given it was a newly recognized or established holiday. And at that time, we were the only remaining city in the metro that had yet to officially designate it. So at that time, we brought forth a resolution and instead of meeting on Monday, we met on Tuesday instead to commemorate that holiday.
I remember, but does council, so what I'm understanding from you is that you would say that council doesn't have authority to designate what constitute city holidays? I mean, we can move the meeting date, but in terms of dates that staff have as paid vacation holidays and our official city holidays for both staff and council, does city council have the authority to establish that?
It's a complicated answer to a relatively simple question. First, city council can designate holidays. And municipal code specifically recognizes that as it relates to your meeting schedule. That you can decide which holidays will affect that meeting schedule. As far as it applies to city staff, it requires negotiation with our collective bargaining units, which are unions. So as you recall, we have two unions of city employees. So we have to negotiate with each one of those and amend their agreements to reach an agreement regarding city holidays. Now, if city council wants to announce that they do think it's appropriate for city staff to also have a Presidents' Day holiday, generally, anything regarding employees would fall to the city manager. However, I do think that is a directive the city council has the authority to make.
Thank you. I would, this is just something I don't want to change anything about going forward with the meeting tonight as, Miss, Member Russell suggested, but I would be interested in continuing this conversation.
Member Ward?
I feel similarly to Mayor Protem Anderson. However, Member Russell mentioned the council policy manual. And when I look at the council policy manual, page six, item B on that page of Roman numeral three says, "Meetings open to the public." And item three says, "Regular meetings of the city council should be held in City Hall on the first and third Mondays of each month and at the time designated by city council or such other time and day as the city council may from time to time designate, provided, however, that when the day fixed for any regular meeting falls upon the day designated by the city council or law as a local, legal, or national holiday, such meeting shall be held at the same hour on the next succeeding day, not a holiday." Now, if today is indeed a national holiday, then by meeting today, we are in violation of our city council policy manual.
Yeah.
As I understand it, we have some options there. We could, you know, the meeting has been legally noticed. So we're in compliance with the Sunshine Law. My suggestion to correct this would be to pass a motion to override the rules so that we can conclude the meeting tonight.
Go ahead, Member Nals. Sorry, sorry, City Attorney Nals.
Thank you for pointing that out. That is different than what our municipal code says. And we were applying the municipal code that overrides the council policies. So I, I'm going to flag that provision for consideration for revision. We keep a running list of things to reconsider in the council policies because that's, that's not what municipal code says legally. And so I think our municipal code would override that provision.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Member Wright.
City Manager, you said that Inglewood has more holidays than surrounding cities. How so is that if we're following the national holiday calendar? When I look at surrounding cities, everyone's celebrating Juneteenth and Presidents' Day.
Yes, thank you for the question and for the discussion as well. This has been a lot of discussion and debate and I've, we have made it clear that tonight's meeting has been on the calendar. It's been on your council calendar as well as our newsletters that we send and each Friday report over the last several weeks. What I will say about the holiday schedule is that we are very unique in that we have, we're the only city that I know of where our collective bargaining unit, which is a charter-approved collective bargaining unit called the Inglewood Employee Association, does have the right to negotiate holidays. So when Juneteenth came around, I announced that we were going to be observing Juneteenth as a national and state holiday and was informed that, no, in fact, the union has to approve that. So in light of the fact that we do have more holidays in other cities, mainly because we have the day after Thanksgiving, which is not something that's universal in all cities. We also have Christmas Eve as well as New Year's Eve, also not typical among cities. That puts us at the top of that list. So my concern with just kind of saying carte blanche, okay, we're going to add another city, excuse me, another paid holiday because, you know, we have lots of employees who can't observe holidays. They have to work. And that is an additional cost to the city. My concern as administrator and trying to be a steward of tax dollars is that I wasn't going to carte blanche give an additional holiday. So I asked the unions to select a holiday that they would trade out for that, and they selected Presidents' Day. So that we can still kind of stay under, or at least in line with other cities and not be so far over those.
So New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, day after Thanksgiving, we look at as holidays. But now a national holiday, Presidents' Day, is no longer looked at as a holiday in Inglewood.
I don't think it takes away the fact that it's a holiday, but it's not one that we are, you know, closed for our business on. Another example would be Columbus Day. You know, that's another national holiday that's not observed on the city.
That's not a national holiday.
It is.
I thought they took that away.
It's still a federal holiday, Columbus Day. Second Monday of October. But in that instance, we were always having a study session during that evening as well.
It just, and the big thing with Juneteenth is it's on a set date, not a day of the week. So last year, it did fall on a Monday. Previously, it was on a Thursday and a Friday. So it doesn't impact council like this does. So I think that's- President Day is unique compared to Juneteenth. So it just, I don't know. It's very mucky. And then with these added days, I don't know. It's a mess.
Veterans' Day does rotate, and so that is the rotating. Columbus Day, for instance, is always on a Monday and we've always met on Columbus Day, even though it's a national holiday.
Right. Right, and I thought there were talks of saying, mm, no more with Columbus Day.
Still a federal holiday.
So, so the bargaining group didn't say, okay, we will get rid of Columbus Day and keep?
Well, Columbus Day was one holiday we didn't already observe.
Okay, yeah, I think a lot of groups don't, so. Okay.
Member Preng?
So I just have a quick question. In cases of a conflict like this, what legally trumps? City council policy or municipal code?
Municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to clarify, in Columbus Day, it's not a recognized holiday by the state of Colorado. There's something like twenty-eight states that don't recognize it, and we are one of them. I think that might be that confusion.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. I worked for the city years ago, probably fifty years ago, in the police department. We have never, the city of Inglewood has never observed Columbus Day, ever. ever. President's Day happened to be instituted in 1885. It was George Washington's birthday. And from 1885 to 1971, when they changed... When the government changed all their... A bunch of their holidays to a different Monday, President's Day was moved to the third Monday of every month. President's Day has been around for a long time. The city has celebrated it for a long time. I would suggest that perhaps the city employees would look at eliminating holidays that aren't really recognized as holidays by anybody, except for us. I... This is very problematic to me. Why did we ever write our policy to violate municipal code? So either municipal code needs to be changed, or a policy manual needs to be changed. And in this, I believe the policy of council has been that set wherever a legal holiday was observed, it's been forever. If it's on Monday night, part of the reason the council decided that clear back decades ago is because we put our council meeting on Monday night, and there are certain holidays that fall on Monday. I believe that's why that policy was instituted. And I believe this is very important, and I believe we should do it. I suppose if city staff wants to decide any holidays they want, and city council has nothing to do with that, then city council can decide, we don't want to meet on President's Day, and keep it the way it is. And you all can do whatever you want to do.
That's actually the way the policy is written. We should have been directed by council to move the meeting, but we were never directed to do that.
Why do we... Okay, then that brings up another problem. We have a leadership problem on this council, that they are not stepping up to the plate to address what is in the best interest. And I think this council ought to be reconsidering who we place in the mayor and the Mayor Protam position.
Thank you very much, Member Russell. Mayor Protam, did you want something to add or... No? Okay. So in terms of moving forward with tonight, obviously, we followed all this steps, but is there anyone uncomfortable moving forward with the meeting as is, or is there a motion to suspend the rules tonight in order to move forward with the meeting tonight? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Just as a point of clarification, my understanding is that we don't have to suspend the rules because they're overridden already by the code. So I think we can just move forward.
I move that we cancel the meeting tonight, the rest of the meeting, and postpone it to a future date.
Thank you, Member Russell. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? So the motion on the table is to cancel the meeting to a date uncertain.
No, to a date certain.
To a date certain? To next Monday or...
That would be okay.
Okay, to next Monday. All right. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp.
Nay.
Member Pring.
Nay.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Nay.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Nay.
Let the record show five nays. Sorry, two ayes and five nays.
Thank you so much. And we will now move on to consent agenda items. I have four items to pull from consent agenda. They are nine C1, two, three, and seven. Member Russell, is there anything else?
Yes. Nine C4, I think is the... One, two, three, and seven is what you had.
One, two, three, and seven.
And I would like to pull nine C4.
Perfect. Anything else? All right.
Did I pull... I'm sorry, did I pull five?
No. The Hampton Booster Pump Station?
Yes.
Pull that as well, or...
Please.
All right. So then that leaves items for consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve nine B1 and two, and nine C6?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pring. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. That takes us to nine C1. This is you, Member Russell. We have Deputy Director of Engineering, Tim Hosts. And do you have any questions regarding the contract with Joe Johnson Equipment?
Hi there. Good evening.
All right. It's a simple question, please. The bid was put out on January 10th of 2024. And on it, it says it is good for 20 days past that January 10th period. Obviously, that would be through the end of January. We're way past that period. So since we're past the 20-day grace period by, you know, what, 19 days now, what happens with these bids? Can they up the price on us? Because it's, what, a half-million-dollar item? Can they come back to us and say, mm, that's not good now. Here's the new price. This is what we need to do.
So the price actually is when we take delivery. That's why we have that contingency in there, because the way they price these trucks now, and the cost of the steel and everything, there is a fluctuation, because it takes about a year to build one of these trucks. So the price does fluctuate a little bit. So we do have a contingency in there to make sure we have enough approved for when we take delivery of the trucks. So there... At this point, they have not increased the price after the January period there, but it could increase by the time we take delivery, probably early next year. And so we do have a bit of a contingency to cover that.
Okay. And then, this is under Public Works. My other question is, is this is just under $600,000. These big priced things, this is a tangible thing, obviously, why are we putting it on a consent agenda opposed to something that would be open and discussed, opposed to just us voting on it for my education?
Oh, yeah. That's not a decision I make. I defer to the mayor.
Yeah. Member Wright, that decision is made by myself and the Mayor Protam during Mayor Manager's Meeting.
Okay.
So we get basically like a one-sentence notice on what the item is about. Sometimes it does have a price amount on it, or the contract amount. Sometimes it's just left blank, but we just go based off of one sentence off of what that consent agenda.
What might be easy and what may not.
Some may be easier than others, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's just what I needed, to see if the price was going to go up, you know, based on that grace period or not. And maybe it... All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, do you have a question or...
No, my...
Any further questions on this item? Seeing, can I get a motion to approve nine C1?
I move to approve nine C1.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Deputy Director, we still have you up. This is for the resolution authorizing the purchase of property from A&amp;E Ventures for the Dartmouth Bridge widening project. Member Wright, this is yours as well.
I guess you filled my dance card tonight. Okay. My question is, is that on the memorandum of agreement, and I guess this will be for both nine C1 and two, I have different questions, but the same on this, why is it that we... Improvements is added to the price when we're doing temporary easement, and I guess it would be also purchase? Why are we adding, you know, improvements, river rock, boulders, trees, and stuff like that? Shouldn't this have been part of the construction when we're putting that estimate together from the beginning?
So actually, those improvements are there now, and that's the cost of them losing those improvements. We've got to pay to take that stuff out. They have the trees and the rock now that we're going to remove to install the roadway and the curb and gutter. So it's compensating them for what's already there.
Okay, so they're going to lose the pretty, and we're compensating them for them. Oh, well, that was easy peasy. Okay. That's what I needed. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
So my question on here is buying the $120,206, why didn't we know that at the beginning when we were... Before we did the... While we were doing the bridge project?
So the way we structured the bid on the bridge project, we had to follow the CDOT process, and the right-of-way process takes so much longer than the plans. We... What we did was called a conditional approval. We agreed not to work in these areas till we worked out the cost of the easement. It could end... It took till now to get that worked out. So that's... We didn't have that cost up front. We kind of had a general idea it was going to be around 110, 120. But we didn't have an exact cost till we got the appraisals back, and we were able to compare their appraisal and our appraisal, and come up with a fair value for the property. So that's something we just don't know upfront right away. We have an estimate. We don't get it until we actually have those appraisals in hand.
So even two weeks ago, we looked at paying them for a year, right, to have access to get the work done, and the purchase of this property didn't happen at that same time. Did we know it then?
Not sure I understand the question fully. Is it...
A couple of weeks ago, we... It was like $1,200, I want to say, for the... Or maybe it was a couple thousand, that we were paying these different corners of the bridge. And now we're actually buying something from two of the properties.
That's correct. These two properties, this evening, we have to actually buy right-of-way to fit the roadway into there. The others, the other three from the previous meeting were temporary easements only to construct the improvements. We needed a little space behind the curb and gutter to put the forms and everything. But these here are temporary easements, as well as permanent right-of-way to actually fit in the additional lane going eastbound there, as well as the ramp on the southwest corner. We just could not squeeze it into existing right-of-way. These two are the only ones we had to unfortunately go through this process to get the right-of-way to fit everything.
Okay, thank you. And they were actually two different things, too.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Member Wright.
So did we... How long has this project been going on?
I think it's been close to 10 months now, 10 and a half months.
So at the beginning of this project, we did not know that we were going to need these easements or purchase these properties 10 months ago, when they were doing the layout and the computer renditions of this?
So we actually didn't know we would need them, and that's where we got that conditional right-of-way approval. We didn't know the exact dollar amount, but we knew we were going to need a little space. And we didn't want to hold up the construction of the project while we negotiated all these easements, because it is a very long, drawn-out process to get ahold of the property owner, do the appraisals and negotiate. And so we got that conditional approval so we could get the construction going. And we just had to agree not to work in these areas until the easements were approved. And that's what we're here this evening to get these final two approved, so we can fully complete all the improvements.
So it's taken 10 months to negotiate with these companies?
Pretty close, yeah. It's been quite a process to get the CDOT appraiser to approve everything, and then get it through that process. So it has... It takes some time, and we didn't want to hold up the rest of the construction for these little parcels we need.
Okay. And are we looking... I guess we'll just hit all the questions here. Are we looking at additional easements and purchases and stuff from other businesses or properties?
No. These are... These five are the... The three previous on the previous meeting, and these two are the five we need, and we won't need any more to finish the project.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Member Russell?
Just one more question. So is that really why the bridge project has slowed down a little bit, is because of these right-of-way easements? I mean, it seems like we got the one side of the bridge done, and all of a sudden, things slowed down.
Yeah. So the easements aren't really the cause of it. That's why we did this conditional thing. We knew we wouldn't need to work in these areas till towards the end. But the delay now is more due to those overhead wires again. They're just... They're fighting us, and we're trying to get them into the new conduits, and the new conduits aren't cooperating quite as we expected them to. So that's been a bit of a delay to get those wires out of the way, so we can start the foundation for the new widening part. But it's slowly coming together, and we should be moving forward here very shortly.
Thank you very much.
Member Wright, did you have another question or...?
I'd just like my light on.
There we go. You can keep it on for the next one. So with that, can I get a motion to approve nine C2?
I move to approve nine C2.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
Aye, second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Mr. Hosts, you're up again. Member Wright, you have a question regarding the resolution authorizing the purchase of property from... Yeah, Dartmouth, for the Dartmouth Bridge widening project.
He actually...
We're good on this?
He answered all the questions, yes.
Any further questions, Mayor Protam?
No.
No? All right. Leaving lights on here. Can I get a motion to approve nine C3 then?
I move to approve nine C3.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments?
I just... I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
I just want to say I do appreciate the work that has been done on the Dartmouth Bridge. This has been a long time coming. I want to say maybe all the way back even before 2014, and we had to keep re-appropriating money. And so I just thank you for all the hard work you're doing. And people are looking forward to have the road fixed all the way west of the bridge and all the way to Santa Fe. Thank you so much.
All right. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right. Tim, I think we're good for now. So thank you so much for your time. Moving on to nine C4, Eric Sampson, our planner... Is Eric Sampson? Yeah, there we go. As well as the chair... Excuse me. Let's see here. This is... Member Russell, you have a question regarding the amendment to the boundaries. And we have Ms. Hinkus as well up here with us. So go ahead, Member Russell.
Okay. If I didn't live in this area, I probably would have no questions. So the map and changing... And actually, we went... Someone went into the GIS map today to look, and race was already on it. Did it already get fixed before this, or was it reflected correctly?
You have to turn.
Sorry. There we go. All right, Eric Sampson, Planner 2 with Community Development. As far as I'm aware, it must have been changed prior to tonight's hearing, because it had not been correct in the past, prior to us receiving the request to change the boundaries.
Okay. And just one other question, because you can't see it on this. Is Dartmouth Circle still in the Hampton Hills?
Yes, as far as I... I believe, yes. Dartmouth Circle is still in Hampton Hills.
Okay. I mean, okay, I don't necessarily really care if we got Xed out. I don't know where they put us if they didn't. But I actually do like being in a covenant-protected community. I didn't know it until we were doing Code Next. Thank you.
I guess just the question, just because I think I'm a little bit confused. Was one side of Race originally part of the boundaries, and now we're adding the second part of Race, the other side? Or vice versa? I'm just wondering in terms of the question that Member Russell asked about the change already occurring.
Okay. So nothing was Xed from Hampton Hills. We're just moving it over one block.
To the west side of the street, right?
So it was at Vine, from what I remember, and now it's moving over to Race.
Okay.
Actually, it still does not include the west side of Race.
It does not, okay.
But apparently, they had cut it off before Race and put it on Vine. Is that... That's my understanding of reading this.
Previously, yes. And now it would be extended over to Race by one block.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks.
Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
Just for additional clarification, page 265 of the packet shows the existing neighborhood boundary, and then the new boundary that this would change. And there's no change to anything north of Dartmouth. It's just below that.
So what page is that in? I mean, are there two numbers?
In the PDF, it's 265. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what it is in the printed copy. It's directly after the neighborhood map illustration and the historic Hampton Hills graphics.
Oh, on the back. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. And with that, any... All right, and with that, any further questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve nine C four?
I move to approve nine C four.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for the information. Uh, coming, I believe this is Member Wright. This is the contract for construction with J R Filling Act for the Hampton Booster Pump Station at Clarkson. Uh, Adam Marquez? Or do we have Director Van Rye? I see Adam coming as well. Uh, Member Wright, what is your question on the item?
Good evening. Okay, I was just a little confused, which it doesn't take much sometimes. So in the council communication, um, it says the Water and Sewer Board recommend and counsel approve the C F S um, during the February, um, thirteenth, twenty twenty-third meeting. And then when I look... Um... So I'm confused. Did the sewer, um, Water and Sewer Board say that they wanted this in twenty twenty-three? Or was it twenty twenty-four?
No, so this was last week. Uh, so it was twenty twenty-four. So Water and Sewer Board saw this item last week. So if it says twenty twenty-three in the packet, it should have said twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
It was it was a it was a meeting last week.
Okay, okay. Because I was... Because the the next year up twice, sorry. Um, because I think there's a couple of places where things are twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. And then when I'm reading contracts, things are... Okay, that's all I had on this one, but don't go far.
We'll go check that because I want to make sure that that is right, um, in the memo. It should it should say Water and Sewer Board twenty twenty-four. Um, but there may have been a typo at which point.
Well, and the reason why, because, okay, and this is why I had the question. So on the communication, it says twenty twenty-three. But then on the PowerPoint, it says twenty twenty-four. And I guess that's where...
Yeah, so Water and Sewer Board recommended counsel approve this last week. So that would be twenty twenty, just, uh, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so I was confused on, I guess, which one was correct. So it's just, okay, that's what I had on that one. So I'm 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 good.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member Prang?
Thank you. Um, just a quick question. On page five seventy of our packet under Engineers Review, it says that the engineer does not review for dimension weights, clearances, et cetera. So who does those reviews and when?
Do you want to get this one, Adam? All right, I'm going to turn this over to Adam.
Okay.
Um, can you repeat the question?
Under the the section, um, in the presentation, under Engineers Review, it says that the engineer does not review for dimensions, weights, clearances, et cetera, which in my mind, I would assume an engineer would review for. So I'm just wondering when and how and who that review?
I assume that's I assume that's in the project specifications, um, in which case we're directing the contractor to essentially, um, follow the contract documents, um, so that the design engineering plans and specifications. Um, the engineer does provide a review of the contractor's submittals. Um, but there's a bit of a kind of a non-binding language that the engineer agrees to. Um, so it's the contractor's responsibility to make sure that they're meeting the plans and the specifications.
So I'm understanding what you said. The specifications are in the contract documents. You're reviewing the contract to assure that the contractor is doing what they're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
Which would mean that we are meeting all of the required specifications.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed. Thanks.
Any further questions? See, now can I get a motion to approve nine C five?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Member Wright. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? Nope. Uh, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Moving on to nine C seven, we got Director Van Rye. Member Wright, what is your question?
Okay, um... One more time here. Again, on here, it says, um, the Water and Sewer Board recommended, um, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. But then when I go in and I'm looking on the renewal agreement, we're reading all the warehouses. And it says on three fifteen, twenty twenty-two, um, the parties entered into contract for services. And then the second line, it says whereas on two twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the parties renewed the contract for a second one-year term. So I'm kind of questioning the dates on all of this, if we might have some typos.
So I'm going to turn this one over to Deputy Director Stone to address those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so the it sounds like the approval by Water Sewer Board, um, that again was a typo. That should have been twenty twenty-four, um, in the memo. But the original contract date that we started with U S I C was, um, in twenty twenty-one. And then we renewed it again in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and then we're renewing it one more time.
Okay, and and but the first one was Agreement One, and this is Agreement Two, correct?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to know the dates again. Did?
Yeah, so because it says Agreement Two, but the dates are in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So I was just before I I just want to make...
Okay, twenty twenty-two is when it started, was the first year we contracted. And then per 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 triment policies, we can renew another renew the contract another four times before we go back out for solicitation for these services.
Right, and I I see because it says this is number two.
Yeah.
Even in the memo, I just want to make sure we have all of our dates correct.
So that's renewal number two.
Right.
Contract one, and then two renewals.
Right, I just want to make sure that... All our eyes are, you know, so, okay. Um, and then in previous things, I see we have contingency for ten percent and five percent. This one's fifteen. Why so much more, um...
So one of the reasons that we added more is that, um, we plan to go into construction for lead service line replacement this year. Um, and then there's other construction projects going on throughout the city. So anytime that locates are needed, that is the service that is called. And we just are anticipating an uptick of that this year.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Member Russell?
I just I think maybe one thing here, and and I just noticed that on the renewal agreement number two, the line is still blank onto when the the date is that we're entering into this agreement. So the date that's going to be on here will probably be sometime in March of twenty twenty-four, correct? Where that blank line is?
That's correct. I believe it's filled in when it's fully executed, so signed by the mayor, yes. So it depends on how fast it goes through the signatures, um, through the city process.
Okay, but I can I can see why, um, Council Member Wright was confused because there really is no date in here other than that and trying to figure out. This will be actually, will this be Agreement Number Two or Number Three?
Number three.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? See, now can I get a motion to approve nine C seven?
I move to approve nine C seven.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
All right, thank you very much, the staff, for answering all of those questions. Everyone, are we good to keep moving or do we need a break? Good to keep moving? All right. All right, there's no public hearing items for tonight. We're moving on to eleven A one. This is CB five, approval of the amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreements with the Colorado Department of Transportation involving additional funds for the design and construction of Dartmouth Traffic Calming Corridor. Director Host is back or Deputy Director Host is back?
I do have a brief presentation on this one. I'll try to get going here and then I'll answer any questions. Get this thing to work. Moving ahead there. Sorry.
I know we have the slide deck in front of us, but this is a pretty important topic that's come up pretty often, so... Better to wait for this item to or the PowerPoint slides to show up. Member Russell, go ahead.
And I just want to know if it begs the question that there's a problem with video also or no?
Uh, no. I've seen a shaking head from Mister Hustling that there is no issue with the, uh, recording of the YouTube at the moment, but...
The recording's fine. That's been fine all day. We've had the incoming audio problem into the room is the only issue that we've experienced tonight.
Thank you, Mister Hustling. Everybody has a different way to get to the... Documentation for the meetings. All right. There it is. Thank you so much, everyone. Deputy Director, I guess you're ready to go.
All right, great. So, yeah, this is a brief presentation. I'll go over kind of where we're at with this project and, uh, what the purpose of this amendment is. So this is our, uh, Dartmouth Traffic Calming Corridor project and our I G A with the Colorado Department of Transportation that's funding ninety percent of this work. So I'll go with the project purpose here. The, uh, these, uh, many roundabouts are proposed to achieve reduction in traffic fatalities and injuries and, uh, enhance safety for all users, uh, bikes and pets as well. And then as well as encouraging pedestrian bicycle usage of the, uh, the intersections. So the location, as you'll see here, we've actually had to eliminate one of the many roundabouts due to budget constraints. As we've gotten the design of this one, it's been the budget has kind of ballooned a little bit. The cost of construction is more than we expected. So we've had to, uh, the purpose of this amendment is to get some more money, and I'll go over that here in a minute. But we've got, basically, the Logan and Downing are our two roundabouts. The Clarkson one had to be eliminated, and that one, uh, does not have the accident history of Logan and Downing. So it really doesn't necessarily need the roundabout, and that's why we couldn't, uh, get additional funding to put that in as well. So we've got Logan and Downing as well as those six intersections there with they'll have the, uh, the bobouts to make the pedestrian crossings a little shorter and to to help the traffic calming, uh, piece of that as well. And the timeline here, I'll give you a little update where we're at with things. We're we're pretty close to the design being completed on this. We're hoping, uh, this spring to have the design done. Try to bid the project out in the fall. Once we get all the C dot approvals, we've got to get C dot's approval to to bid this one out, and it takes a little while. Hoping that, uh, construction begins before the end of the year and then, uh, have it completed by the end of next year. It's kind of our timeline right now, what we think will, uh, play out on this project. So here's the funding here that kind of shows the breakdown. We had the original amount there on the upper left was just over a million dollars. We were fortunate enough to get C dot to commit to another eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand to help us build this project. And we just had to contribute, uh, ten percent of that amount there. So that's helped us out quite a lot and actually made this project feasible again. Because it was, uh, as we determined there that the cost was, uh, the original, uh, grant amount was not enough to do what we, uh, anticipated, uh, having to do here. So we were able to get that money, and, uh, we feel like it should be enough to build the two roundabouts and all the bobouts and the, uh, the improvements listed on the council communication there. And then in summary, yeah, we we recommend that this, uh, I G A amendment be approved to, uh, to accept this additional, uh, C dot funding to be able to to fund the construction of these improvements on Dartmouth Avenue. And, uh, with that, I'll take any questions, yeah?
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions? Start up to my right. Let's start with, uh, is it Member Wright or or Member Ward? Uh, Member Noonan Camp, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for, uh, the update here. I I have the question about removing the Clarkson Circle. If down the road, we decide that we would like to add it back, um, and we can come up with the funding, is there any issue with doing the work later? Or will it be challenging to do it outside of the scope of this project?
I know it can be done independently. It's a separate intersection far enough away from the others that we could always go back. And if we want to put that in, if we, uh, allocate the adequate funding, it could certainly put in a later date.
Okay, and then my next question is just about the funding, the work being more expensive than what we anticipated. As we adjust to, you know, the changing economic circumstances, do we anticipate more challenges like this on this project or others? Or do we feel like this is an outlier?
So this project here, what what we did, the consultant came up with the construction cost estimate, and that's what we went back to say, hey, we need more money to get this thing built. So we're pretty confident that this funding will be enough to build what's, uh, outlined on the drawing there. We don't feel like we'll be short this time.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward?
My first question is is in regards to the public engagement that we've done thus far. Um, I see on the council communication that we had a website, uh, that was open, uh, for public comment for four weeks in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we're now in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, fairly far removed from from that time. And this is approval for the design phase of what what we're about to construct. Uh, are we confident that we have done adequate communication and outreach with the neighbors in that area that will be affected? And what type of feedback have we received from that website, if any?
So the the actual feedback, we received a few little comments about design and preference type things. Nothing really major. We didn't get a ton of feedback, but the, uh, the communication plan for this project is we will go out for a second round of communication, kind of outlining, here's what it's going to look like, here's how you use it, here's how it's going to be built, here's how it's going to impact traffic, and we'll definitely alert the public that we're getting ready to build this, and it's going to be different. You know, this is obviously a whole different configuration of the intersection. We want people to understand what what it is, how it's going to be used, and what it's going to look like. And that that is still to come here, probably in the summer sometime. We'll have that before we go to the construction phase.
I I do have some concern with that process because it sounds like that type of outreach is more along the lines of, here's what we're going to do. And at the point that we have designs and plans that we paid an engineer to do, and we go to the neighborhood and we say, hey, here's what we're going to do, and they say, no, we don't want that. Now we are either a victim to the sunken cast fallacy where we've already paid for something that we don't necessarily intend to do, or we're just going to ignore our constituency and tell them, yeah, we're going to do it anyway.
So that was part of the original public outreach in the website was to give people an opportunity to go on there and and voice any concerns or any issues that they saw. And and most of the the feedback we got was fairly positive. I don't think we got too much negative feedback or anything, that why are you doing this? This will never work. It was mostly, you know, the the they want to see traffic slowed down, and they want to see safety and the intersection function better, and so there's not as many crashes and accidents and that type of thing. So we really didn't get a lot of, you know, pushback or negativity on what the configuration. So we we continued to move ahead. We did have the, uh, the council study session in October of twenty twenty-two where we kind of went over the process the consultant used to to select this mini roundabout configuration that they're using. And that it was very clear that that would be the, uh, configuration that would improve the accident history. And then we've some of the struggle as we've gone has been, you know, as as the the concerns you've had over, uh, bicycles and pets some of the struggle as we've gone has been, you know, as, as the, the concerns you've had over, uh, bicycles and peds and things, we've, we've had to make sure, reconfigure some of the concrete to make sure that all works together. You, you, you don't want to shortchange any, any mode of transportation, so we've, it's been some of the costs as well, a little more concrete work and things we've had to do that we didn't anticipate to, to make sure it functions well for all modes of travel.
My, my second question has to deal with, uh, some of my comments earlier tonight, um, you know, regarding roundabouts in general. Uh, as I drive them around town, I actually tend to like them. I like the way they slow down traffic. I, I, I like the way the traffic pattern works. However, uh, I have a friend who's blind, and she has a real serious problem with roundabouts. She literally cannot navigate them. Um, so I see the pedestrian crossings offset from the roundabouts on the initial design plan. But are those signalized in any way to stop traffic so that the blind pedestrian knows that it's safe to cross?
There is no signal on them. It, it is their directional ramps, so that, similar to the other directional ramps, it does direct pedestrians across the right direction to get to the other side and feel those domes on the other side, the truncated dome symbols there, so they know they've made it and they're back up on the walk, but there is no audible, uh, signal included in the design at this point.
I have to admit, that's, that's a little concerning to me from a safety standpoint for people who are visually impaired. Um, you know, the design is obviously not fully in yet, but I, I just don't know that I could approve a design that doesn't appropriately accommodate those people to the point where they can feel and be safe. Um, as I picture that experience walking with a cane, you step into traffic and you're committed. There's no refuge from there, and you are counting on motorists who are potentially frustrated by the fact that they have to go through a roundabout in the first place, coming out of that safely, paying attention to where their vehicle is headed. They may be moving slowly, but if their, you know, two to four thousand pound car hits you, that's a catastrophic event. Um, so, uh, I don't know if there's anything we can do about that at this point, and I'm not at the place where I'm going to vote no, but when we do come to final approval and groundbreaking on the project, that may be a deal breaker for me.
I'll let Director Rochelle speak to that a little bit.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council Victor Rochelle, Director of Public Works. Um, thank you, Councilmember Ward, for the, the question and comment. Um, so in that specific instance, what we would do is if there was a specific need identified, we could look at additional enhancements like a rectangular rapid flashing beacon with a potential audible attached to it. We don't automatically install that. It's not a requirement per se, but if a, a route is identified for a user that has that need, uh, we could look at some potential enhancements at the crossings.
Okay, and, uh, if I may, I, I would encourage us to reach out to, to organizations that advocate for the blind, um, rather than forcing the blind person, who may not actually read a lot of our materials because they're blind, to, to find out the hard way that there's been a change to their ability to travel safely through our community.
Yeah, the, thank you. Uh, great feedback. We, we do, um, keep record of those outreaches, and a lot of times advocacy groups will reach out to us directly and say, hey, we have a user, uh, uh, not always, but a lot of times these folks are plugged into that, and then we try and accommodate that whether it's a roundabout or a traffic signal. Um, so those lines of communication are open, um, but, uh, thank you for the feedback. We'll certainly, uh, conduct that outreach.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, the gentleman that came and spoke at Public Comment two weeks back mentioned that he has a visually impaired neighbor at Dartmouth and Downing. So, just, uh, but yeah, I, I would second that. Um, Member Wright and then Member Prang.
Um, and to, to, um, Member Ward's comments. We're, you know, Porter Hospital is what, two blocks from Clarkson or from what Downing and?
Porter or Swedish or Craig.
Porter Hospital is just two blocks north.
Uh, probably be six blocks north.
Is it six? I thought it was, so, um, and also to the roundabouts, a concern is, you know, just ADA, um, concerns. We have the highest number of handicapped residents in Inglewood than, um, any surrounding or nearby city. So I, I, not only blind, but just, um, people in general that it just sparks concern. Um, so one of the things that, um, you know, Porter is an overflow hospital for Swedish and also, um, the route to, um, Porter is Downing. Um, so has there been any conversations with Denver Fire and EMS, because that would be one of their main routes and concerns, um, you know, or red flags for them as to a roundabout in that intersection for them. There have been discussions, um, previously about response times. So if Swedish is diverting traffic or diverting, you know, calls from the Swedish to Porter or other hospitals, it is delaying treatment already, and then if there's a roundabout involved, is that delaying additional treatment? Or if someone just wants to go to a different hospital, um, that's just a thought, and I definitely hope that we've had those conversations, because I read an article recently where Denver has stopped, um, putting in roundabouts at the request of Denver Fire. Um, so that is definitely a concern. Um.
Go ahead, Deputy Director. Did you want to answer that?
Yeah, I, I can respond to that. We have engaged with Denver Fire and, uh, made them aware of this is coming, and the, the way these are designed, they're mountable, so the fire truck can drive right over the, uh, circle in the middle, and it really doesn't delay them at all. That's part of the design, is they, they won't have to go around it. They'll go right over it with the truck, and it won't slow them down, and we have engaged with them, and they are comfortable with that design that that'll, that'll.
Okay, and then in the center of those circles, has there been any discussion what's going to be put in the middle of them? Is there going to be greenery? Is there just going to be mulch? Is there going to be nothing?
It'll actually be concrete.
Just concrete, the whole thing, good. Um, I don't know if anybody's been at the King Supers on, um, Federal and Bellevue, but they decided to put a roundabout in our parking lot. Um, it's the stupidest thing I've ever seen in my life. Um, I was there, oh, Valentine's Day, big mistake. The, the traffic from the roundabout, the traffic jam was going clear down Bellevue because of the roundabout. So, um, I think maybe people may want to go and check out the King Supers parking lot roundabout before we start putting roundabouts, um, because it shows truly what, I'll leave it there.
Go ahead, Member, Member Prang.
Yes, thank you for the updates. Um, as a new council member, it's helpful to get my head around the project and where we're at with it. Um, I want to thank Member Ward as well on highlighting the issues for the visually impaired or blind residents. Um, I was raised by a blind mother, and so I know that, um, reality is, these are great challenges. Not just for the blind person themselves, but for the children that might be with them who are trying to help them navigate our neighborhoods. Um, so I greatly appreciate you highlighting that more. Um, I have two questions. One, um, is another safety issue could have been discussed before. I just don't, um, know the answers to it. So we have bike lanes on Dartmouth. How do bike lanes interact with a roundabout, and how are we ensuring the safety of bikers versus vehicles? Like, I, I understand roundabouts, we're trying to slow the traffic down, keep things calm and safe. Um, but I just want to know, like, are there statistics that, that show that we can put in roundabouts with bike lanes and keep both pedestrians and bikers safe?
So there is actually two ways bikes can navigate the roundabout. They, uh, they can either join the flow of traffic through the roundabout and keep going. The, the way the roundabout works, the cars slow down now for the bikes can merge in, and the more comfortable riders will typically just stay out on the street and then ride right through the roundabout with traffic. And then there's also the, the more recreational bikers, wherever they can dismount and use the ADA ramps, get up on the sidewalk and go across the actual crosswalk to get to the other side if they don't want to ride with the flow of traffic there. So there's two ways for, depending on their comfort level, they can navigate through the roundabout.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other question is, how far back from the actual corners of the in- intersections do bulbouts extend?
So they're actually right at the intersection typically. They don't, you mean, you're talking about how far out from the curb?
Like, how far back? So like, there was the crossing of the intersection. I know in previous discussions, we've, um, had members bring up questions about the loss of parking spaces. And so is that truly an issue with this project? I, I noticed in the presentation, it was about six areas throughout the corridor that we would use the bulbouts.
Yeah, so these are right at the corner where parking's not allowed anyway, so there won't be any loss of parking. They're right at the, the corner where you're not allowed to park that close to the corner anyway, so there, there shouldn't be any loss of parking for any properties.
Okay, thank you.
Member Russell?
Um, I, uh, I would like to know, um, if there is a study being done on how they will impact response times, um, in the neighborhoods, whether it's to the hospital or whether it's just an ambulance going to a call. Um, also, I don't know if anybody's been on Yale, um, between University and Colorado Boulevard, where they have bike lanes and they have, um, they have poles like we're putting down here on Floyd, and they have little, it is absolutely crazy. You will be parking outside of the bike lane. There is not enough room. Are we going to do that on Dartmouth? Are we intending to do that on Dartmouth?
So the, the way Dartmouth's set up now, there is room for parking on the bike lane. The, I think it's a three foot wide lane, and there's room for parking, uh, next to the curb. So then that's really not changing with this project. The roundabout will, you know, merge the bike lane through, through the intersection, but there's, the parking situation should not change. There shouldn't be any issue there. So then, yes, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
Um.
Oh, the response time, is that?
Yeah, the response times. Uh, and I don't know if you can answer that question, but have, have we looked at that? Or has the study looked at that?
So I, I don't believe the study has looked at that necessarily, because the way they're designed, they're, they're designed to drive straight over, so it really doesn't delay the fire truck at all. They just keep driving, and they're such a heavy big vehicle, they just barely feel the roundabout, you know, the bump there, the, it'll be mountable curb, so there really isn't a delay in response time. They're able to continue on their way right through there. So it, it doesn't, uh, not expected to impact response times.
And so what about, um, truck traffic? I mean, I have seen some semis on Dartmouth, because ultimately Dartmouth is the farthest north through street from Colorado Boulevard to Federal. It is, when Mr. Kozak was here earlier saying that it was one, there's only four. Dartmouth is one of them on the far north. How is that going to impact truck traffic through there?
So similar to the fire trucks and things, large trucks can then drive directly over the roundabout. The mini roundabout configuration, the way we're building it, we simply don't have the room to, to have a big truck go around the roundabout. We, we've got to let them just drive straight through, and that's how it's being designed, is we've larger delivery trucks and semis and things, they're, they're going to just navigate right over, and that's why the, the, the actual roundabout center is covered in concrete, because we know large trucks are going to need to use that to get through here, and that's just the constraints of the dimensions we're working with on these intersections.
How often will we have to replace that?
Uh, we don't intend to have to replace it very, very often. It's, uh, typically it'll be eight inch thick concrete, similar to a crosspan. The crosspans are all eight inch thick, and trucks, trash trucks, everything drive over them every day, and we don't have a, a history of them failing any sooner than any other concrete, so it will be designed for a truck to drive over that, and, and it won't be like little thin four inch red concrete. It'll be designed to take truck traffic, and that, that's why it's got to be concrete, because we know trucks are going to have to drive over it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Actually, I'll just remark on the Yale piece. Those are protected bike lanes on the Denver side from University to Colorado. We haven't been discussing protected bike lanes as part of this project. I know it's come up in other conversations, but we haven't moved in that direction at this point, unfortunately, so, um. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve eleven A one?
I move to approve eleven A one.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Uh, Member Wright, go ahead. I mean, Su- Member Russell, sorry.
Um, thank you. Um, I have not been in support of this from the very beginning, even before the study ever started. Um, most of the council doesn't live right off of Dartmouth. I mean, that is our main thoroughfare to get into town. Um, I don't think we need roundabouts there. I do think what we needed was to put the bicycle lanes on Floyd and put in a left turn lane at both Downing and Logan. Um, and that would have been much less expensive than this whole project. Um, I think this, um, I don't know how long they're going to be in there before, uh, we decide that we're going to have to tear them out. And I, I really, you know, when you put it out on the website and expect people to respond, people are too busy. They don't have time to look at what's going on in the city. It's no big deal. But I guarantee you, when it starts to impact them, you're going to hear from them, and so is the council. And, um, so there is no way that I can support this project, and now that we have to spend more taxpayer money, um, and i- it's a little bit annoying to me that we weren't given this information before. Obviously, you all knew about it, um, that it was going to cost more money because it's already in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, so, um, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem and then Member Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, staff, for bringing this, this back. As I've said from the beginning, very, uh, happy to see this project moving forward. I know that it's going to be a benefit to both pedestrian safety and, and, um, the traffic speeds through the area as well as, um, the mobility of the traffic, because traffic does tend to move through roundabouts rather quickly while still at a low pace. Um, to Mayor Protem's concern about the, um, or sorry, I'm Mayor Protem. Member Ward's concern.
Keep thrusting on me.
Stuck with it now. Okay. Uh, Member Ward's, um, point about, uh, about the visually impaired, I, it is, I think it's a valid concern. I do think for, for me, um, and the study that, the, the extent that I've, I've studied these, traffic moves slowly through roundabouts, and that's the biggest, biggest thing for safety for whether their, people are visually impaired or not. Whenever a visually impaired person crosses the street, they're always taking a risk because they don't have the ability to check visually, so somebody could run, or if you put, put in signalized intersections, somebody could run through that red light. I think we go through that red, red light at a, at a much faster, you know, much faster pace going through a roundabout. So I think on, on the balance, this will be safer, though it may not, you know, for some visually impaired people, it may not give the same feeling of safety as having a, a flashing signal. I do think, uh, you know, the data shows that these do end up being safer for everybody, so very supportive of this and, um, looking forward to seeing the project continue to move forward.
Member Noonan Camp.
I'm just also going to voice my support for this measure that I'll be voting in support of tonight. Um, I do live in this neighborhood, and I do da- drive Dartmouth every single day, and as I have engaged with, uh, residents and constituents in, in the neighborhood, I've heard from many of them that they are very frustrated by how fast the traffic is going along Dartmouth. And they have been persistent in reaching out to me and saying, when are you going to do something about it? So to say we are going to do something about it this year is very exciting to finally be able to say that. Um, and, you know, when we think about traffic in a community, there's, there's two things we're typically trying to do. We're either trying to get the traffic to move faster and more efficiently and, you know, reduce, uh, congestion, or we're trying to get this traffic to move slower and slow it down and create safety within our neighborhoods. So this is one where we're trying to slow it down, um, in a very residential area where there's, there are cyclists, there are walkers. I walked that area. I walked it today, actually. And so I'm very cognizant of that, and I, you know, from all of the research and data that I've looked at, I think this is a really thoughtful approach. I know there's been a lot of conversation both from the council and from citizens about what Denver has been doing. I do just want to know that Denver Fire has lifted any moratorium on roundabouts in, uh, Denver. They're working with the Department of Transportation, and there are many citizens in a recent Denver Post article who are saying that I wish my neighborhood had a roundabout because it would save lives. So I'm happy to see us maybe in this direction. I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five eyes and two knees.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, uh, Deputy Director Host, and I'll pass it over to Mayor Protem.
Alright, moving on now to, pull up the item, um, eleven B one, reimbursement of recall election expenditures by Mayor Ethaniel Sierra. Um, I know we've had discussion on this. This is the second reading.
Point of order, can, um, did, I just have a question for the city attorney. Did you say before that when?
that when council member accuses themselves, they have to remove themselves from the room also?
Uh, no, excuse me, there is a provision for boards and commissions, but a council member, like a member of the public, has the right to sit in a city council meeting. And, and let me rephrase that. I think the provision that requires people to remove themselves applies to an employee, not an appointed board or commission member, because this is a meeting that's open to the public. So it states that the council member shall remove themselves from the dais, and that's how I interpret that for elected officials.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, any further questions, uh, city attorney or council, before we have a motion? All right, would someone make a motion to approve CB1?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Member Prang, discussion. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, I personally believe that when you are a public servant, and your citizens try to recall you, that it is egregious to take the money back from the citizens. I personally was open records requested. I was charged a lot more money for an attorney than the mayor spent. I never asked the city for a dime. It was part of my job. If you can't afford to do the job, then maybe you shouldn't be here. So I am not in support of reimbursing for expenses. There could have been fundraising done. It wasn't. That's not the citizens' fault. So I will be voting no.
Thank you. Member Russell, any other comments? Uh, Member Prang?
I respectfully disagree with the statement about if you can't afford to do the job. I think that people go out and decide to serve, and if they're elected, they're elected, and it doesn't matter how much you have in your bank account. And I just want to make the point that it wouldn't matter who was requesting this amount up on the dais. I don't want to set, one, I do believe that Mayor Sierra has a right to ask for this. And I, and I'm making that statement, because we've received some feedback that there is no right included. And I think everyone up here would have a right to ask for reimbursement of these expenses. I also just want to make a point about, you know, it, it takes a lot to step up and serve. And I don't want us to set a precedent that, you know, if we as residents and citizens of Inglewood have a right to ask for reimbursement, whether you would opt to or not as an individual, doesn't matter. The right exists for each one of us. And I just don't want whatever decision we make here to be a deterrent from people being willing to step up and serve, regardless of what they might have in their bank account or not to do so.
Thank you. Member Prang, Member Ward?
Yeah, I understand your position, Member Russell. We're dealing with a quirk of Colorado law here that allows reimbursement for a successful incumbent who survives a recall. I, I don't have any objection to the mayor filing this request. I don't have any objection to approving this request. And I'll note, in regards to legal expenses, if, if I happen to encounter some legal expenses, you know, as part and parcel of my service, I would intend to ask this body to reimburse me for those. You know, I, I am in a fortunate position that I, you know, on a daily basis, work with a law firm. So it's unlikely that I would actually experience any legal costs related to this business, given the competency of our city attorney, and the fact that I have ample access to an attorney who enjoys doing pro bono things to defend just cases. But that, that being said, in this matter, you know, I think in comparison to the amount of money the city's already invested in the recall elections, I, I don't have a problem reimbursing Mayor Sierra for these costs, and I will be voting yes tonight.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any other comments? I'll speak briefly to this. I, I'm supportive tonight of doing this reimbursement for Mayor Sierra. I think the, those who, you know, instigate a recall, they're making a, a bet that this is something that the citizens want. When they turn out to be wrong about that, they put a, an elected official through a expensive and time-consuming and challenging process that turned out to be unnecessary all along. The voters of the state of Colorado, through their elected representatives, saw fit to say that a situation like that, they're willing to reimburse their elected representatives for having a situation like that. It's the cost of doing recall. The voters of Colorado and Inglewood want to allow for recalls. When those recalls are unsuccessful, then they want to allow that that elected official could seek reimbursement, as the mayor has done here. So I will be supporting the mayor for this as well tonight. And any final comments? All right, with that, city clerk, would you please call the vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Let the record show four ayes and two nays.
All right, with that, I will turn the meeting back over to very competent Mayor Ethaniel Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We're moving on to 9C1. We have Deputy Director of Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, Brad Anderson, and Aquatics Manager Chris Davidson, here to talk about the resolution to purchase swimming pool chemicals for the Rec Center in Pirates Cove.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson. Members of council, Brad Anderson, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. Staff has put forward towards you a resolution for the purchase of swimming pool chemicals for the Inglewood Recreation Center, and also for Pirates Cove, in the amount of $112,750. The chemicals are used to provide sanitation in both of the pools, and also for all of the balancing chemicals, reagents, and those things, so that we can run a safe pool at both of those locations. Any questions from you guys?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, Member Russell?
Thank you. Um, so how does this compare with what it cost us last year for the chemicals? And are we using this exact same chemicals?
We're using the exact same chemicals. There was a price increase last year over the calcium hypochloride, and also some of the other balancing chemicals that we have. So this is the first year that we had to come to council, or we had to come, go over $100,000.
So, but is it, is it quite a bit more this year, even than last year, or it's about the same as last year?
It's a little bit more, is what the cost of the chemicals will be this year.
So similar to the price of inflation?
Absolutely. You got it. Unfortunately.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, Member Ward?
Uh, I'm seeing in the staff memo, there's some reference to replacing the systems that we use to dispense this. Is there another alternative? My concern is that there's just one vendor to provide this chemical statewide.
There's other vendors that would do calcium hypochloride. We have elected to use Pulsar, which is a more readily available chemical. Our supplier is the rep for the Pulsar chemicals, those. We've elected to do with them. CEM Sales and Service has been a provider for our chemicals, and also for our work on the different various pool equipment that we have. We have a very good working relationship with them, so kind of like to do that one. If we go ahead and switch to a different calcium hypochloride, then it's gonna cost us probably over $60,000 to replace those feeders, because the calcium hypochloride has to have a specific feeder that it goes into. I can't take the feeders that we have now, and then purchase a different calcium hypochloride and put it in that, in the existing feeders. So it has to be totally replaced. And we elect to go with calcium hypochloride. It's, I don't want to say stable, because that's the wrong word, but the other type of chlorines that are out there that we could use for sanitizers is chlorine gas. Chlorine gas, the fire marshals get a little bit excited when we had that. And in fact, both our old outdoor pool, Sinclair Pool, and also the Inglewood Recreation Center, we used to be on chlorine gas. I would love to go to chlorine gas. In fact, I told the, the fire marshal when we built Pirates Cove, he asked me what type of sanitizers we're gonna use. I said, calcium hypochloride. He goes, that's dangerous. I said, okay, I'll go back to gas chlorine. He goes, we'll talk, and we're going back to calcium hypochloride. So that's it. The other thing is, sodium hypochloride is another one, which is bleach, is another thing. The problem that you have with bleach is, it breaks down under high temperatures. It also degrades the potency of it over a long period of time. So in my opinion, that I elect to still stay with calcium hypochloride.
Okay. If I, if I heard you correctly, and I just want to make sure I understand, because that was a lot of chemistry stuff that is a little bit over my head. Uh, we do have the option of switching to a, a different chemical type, but that would have ramifications that we're not comfortable with at the current time.
Correct.
Have we actually done an analysis of, of cost on an annual basis to ensure that, you know, cost-wise, we're in the right place?
Cost is kind of hard, because chlorine consumption is commensurate upon usage, is dependent upon temperature. So at Pirates Cove, for example, if we have a hot summer, you have a dissipation of chlorine at a higher rate than you normally do when it's cool out, and also if you have a busy season, a lot of bathers, then that's also using up the chlorine, too. So to sit here and say that we're gonna sit there and use X amount of chlorine on this timeframe at Pirates Cove over the summertime, or for the whole year at, at the Recreation Center, can't really come up with a really strong point or a, a price because of user bathers.
Okay.
And also the temperature.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? CNN, can I get a motion to approve 11C1?
Still moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, up next is Mr. Alabasi, here to talk about the contract for services with Iron Woman Construction and Environmental Services for the purchase of an ozone trailer. Hey, Director.
I know I'm not Mr. Alabasi, but before Zach does come up, and he is gonna present this item, I've, I've been conferring with staff, and it appears that the, the date issue relative to when the Water and Sewer Board meeting was, carried through a number of items. It was a copy and paste thing that we just, I just missed it in the review on the, the 23. So if, if it's referencing Water and Sewer Board approval of last week, but it seems like it was a year ago, that's the same error. So just to clarify, you might see that again. We'll make sure to catch it in the future, and I, I do apologize for missing that as part of the review. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Zach, because his part of the presentation is way more interesting. So Zach, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Zach Alabasi. I'm the Water Operations Manager of the City of Inglewood. I have, so tonight I want to present to you on the use of ozone for treating taste and odor compounds in our water. So a little bit of background on the taste and odor issue here in Inglewood. About a year and a half ago, when I first started, you know, this, this was one of kind of the top priority issues that I wanted to deal with. So one of the things that I kind of started with is to identify where the sources of these taste and odor compounds in our water source. These are naturally occurring compounds. They are the byproducts of algae blooms, and, you know, sludge deposits, runoffs can, can also contribute to that. So we basically collected water samples from every stream, every source that we use to blend our raw water before we introduce it to the treatment facility and treat it. One of the streams that we tested was the decant from the South Reservoir, as shown in the presentation. The South Reservoir is mainly used to store sludge, or, you know, the, the impurities that we remove in the treatment process. We store it in the South Reservoir, then we de-water it and get it off-site. As you can see in the presentation, on the left side of the South Reservoir, there's significant accumulation of sludge that happened over the years. The water continues to flow. It, you know, mixes with that sludge, but eventually ends up on the right side of the reservoir, and it overflows a decant structure, and then goes back to the North Reservoir. From the North Reservoir, the water blends, most likely with water coming from Union Avenue or the, the South Platte, and enters the treatment facility for, for the treatment. The treatment facility does remove those taste and odor compounds. However, they end up in the sludge that goes back to the South Reservoir, and you get the picture. It's a complete cycle of those compounds that continue to basically seed the, the treatment process. They tend to increase during summer and fall, you know, more sunlight, more flows. So, you know, they do spike from time to time throughout the year. Let's see. So one of the treatments that are proven treatments for taste and odor compounds is ozone. So last year, we actually worked with Iron Woman to pilot ozone for, for the treatment of taste and odor compounds. When we did the testing, we, we quickly realized that our source for, for taste and odor compounds was coming from the South Reservoir. That's where most of the concentration is. And in turn, it was basically, you know, making its way through the North Reservoir. So the highest concentrations we saw were in the South Reservoir, and then next was the, the North Reservoir. So our focus to use ozone wasn't to treat the entire raw water coming into the facility. We wanted to go to the source, which is the decant from the South Reservoir. So we looked at, we worked with the Iron Woman to pilot basically ozone just for, for treating the water stream. And we did that last year in February and, and March. A lot of the, our jar testing or samples that we've collected showed almost 92% reduction in taste and odor compounds, which is great news. Our lab testing also showed 74% reduction. So not only it was destroying those compounds in the, in the decant of the South Reservoir, but that in turn will, over time, reduce the concentration in the North Reservoir, and hopefully at some point, potentially eliminate the problem altogether. So the scope of work, basically, you know, we intend to apply ozone, again, to, to feed and treat the, the, the stream from the South Reservoir. That's gonna go through some regulatory and permitting with the state. Also, that involves the fabrication and delivery of a trailer unit. And again, we are feeding ozone in just a small stream, not the entire water going into the, the treatment facility. After fabrication, delivery, of course, there'll be installation and startup of the trailer unit, training of our operations staff on how to operate this, this unit. And of course, part of the, the, the work will also involve warranty services and one year of maintenance services as well. So the schedule right now is to submit a permit to the state next month, and, you know, we've already had some discussions with the state. Install and start up hopefully in June 24 this year, and continue the, the training on the unit. And of course, that's gonna go with continuous water quality monitoring, to see how much reduction we are getting by feeding ozone. The contract will be with Iron Woman, who is on-call contractor with us right now. And they were actually recommended to us by the manufacturer of the ozone equipment, as their local representative here in the state. And we already executed the ozone treatment pilot, and, you know, again, it proved to be very effective against taste and odor. Again, the other thing that a mobile trailer will, will also provide us with is the ability to move that trailer in the future if we deem it necessary to, to treat another stream. So if we feel that, you know, we've made a lot of progress in the South Reservoir, mobility will allow us to move it to the North Reservoir and focus on the North Reservoir as well. So that's, that's an added flexibility with, with a trailer option. The total contract amount is $334,925. Um, the total contract amount is 334,925 and a 10% contingency for a total of. Uh, 368,417.
Mr. Alabasi, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Alabasi. What, uh, my question is what's the operating cost of this, the ongoing cost of operating the trailer?
So most of the operation cost is going to be focused on electrical costs. So, uh, you know, most of the equipment to generate ozone. That requires quite a bit of electricity for a smaller unit. Again, that was one of the drivers to go with. You know, kind of a focused approach on where the problem exists is to minimize the cost, but it will be mainly electrical. Um, uh, it does not require any chemicals. Uh, it treats basically ambient air and generates, uh, ozone out of the, the natural. Uh, oxygen in the, in the air itself. So, so just basically power to generate that ozone.
Okay, but it does use quite a bit of power to produce this.
Now, for, for a small unit this size, it's definitely manageable. It's not anything significant.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Member Prang?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I like to see us having solutions that are responsive to feedback that we got on the taste of our water. So I'm sure this will make many residents happy to hear about. Um, can you tell me approximately how long does an ozone trailer last?
It really is, you know, well, well, the equipment, I mean, should last, you know, basically like most processes, 15 to 20 years. Again, we, we gonna do the proper maintenance on it. We have, uh, again, one year service contract to go along with it. Just to train our folks on how to maintain it. But, um, you know, we, we have equipment at the plant that been operating for many years. So it's like any other process or any other, other piece of equipment, uh, the more you maintain it, the longer it's going to last. So we're hoping that, you know, 15 to 20 years, maybe even beyond.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is around payments. Um, it does look like the contract cites of an initial payment of $62,250. That's a significant amount. Um, and I think that's due upon our notice of intent to award the contract. So what is that for?
So basically, and I can, uh, I guess. Peter, yeah, or, or Adam, if you want to add to it. As far as the contract itself.
Good evening, council members. Uh, Adam Marquez, Engineering Supervisor for Utilities. Um, the, the payment terms are, um, based on, um, kind of like a, a 20% upfront, 60%. Um, when you receive the trailer and then a retainage payment. Um, so essentially, um. Vendors who are manufacturing large pieces of equipment like that, they typically want sort of, um, that up, an upfront, uh, down payment of typically 20 to 30%.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Member Wright?
Thank you. Um, I'm guessing they don't offer an extended warranty. Um, is there, I know that a lot of equipment that we're purchasing, it is taking a long period of time for us to receive. Will this be the case also?
We don't, we don't expect this with the ozone trailer. Um, most of the ozone generators are readily available. Um, the rest of it will involve a compressor, uh, you know, power supply, control panels and things like that. Most of them are readily available. So, uh, again, we've talked to Iron Woman, um, over the last year or so. And they, they feel confident that it can be fabricated and delivered hopefully in June of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward?
Couple of questions. Um, first of all, what's the anticipated ongoing operation cost? It looks like the only resource we need to operate this is power?
Correct.
Um, do we have some estimate of that? It must be fairly low considering the plant is well.
Yeah, for, for, for the size and the feed rate of ozone, uh, the power should be something really minimal and manageable. Then there'll be also cost for maintaining the equipment over time.
Okay.
I, I don't expect that to be, you know, a huge numbers.
Not comparable to the initial acquisition cost?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, uh, because it requires external power and the trailer is designed to move around, are, are we intending to install? Power outlets or whatever is required in various locations around the plant or?
Right now, we actually have the power source available for the, for the South Reservoir as well as the North Reservoir.
Okay.
So those will be our two main target areas and we already have the power supply right there. So.
Okay, and this question is somewhat related to the project. Um, but more related to ongoing maintenance. We've talked from time to time about dredging the solids out of that South Reservoir. Uh, and, and conducting that process in order to mitigate taste and odor issues. Um, in the Water and Sewer Board meeting, we heard some things that you've made reference to tonight about how. There's an ongoing process where it's sort of a feedback loop, right? The water goes from one place and goes to another and it has that, that stuff in it. And over time, we expect this ozone trailer to improve those conditions. But where are we on our other projects, um, related to this?
So we already.
Thank you. Uh, so like we've talked about before, there's a number of projects we're doing to address, um, taste odor and hardness within the. Within the utility and this is just one of the, one of those. Um, and the reason why we're going with a trailer is because we want to be able to have the flexibility. We want to build a big building that doesn't move. Um, that also couples with the, the, the most recent project that, uh, council approved, which is the purchase of a centrifuge. Which is to change the way that we're de-watering our solids so that we can, can remove all those solids that you saw in the, the photograph. Um, that project, that's on order. So that, that, that one will take about a year to get delivered. In the meantime, we'll be designing how it gets installed so that we can install it, uh, once it gets here. Um, but even when we install that, it's still going to take, you know, it could take upwards of five years to get that, um, the, those solids down. So the ozone trailer is another way to attack it in the immediate, um, the immediate term. And then if we turn out, if we, if we get rid of all the solids, the, uh, the issues go away from the South Reservoir. Then because it's a trailer, we can move it to other locations if, to start to, um, try and further optimize. The removal of these types of, um, constituents. Um, right now, we know this is the main area where they're coming from. But thanks largely to the work that Zach and his staff did researching this to figure this out. Once we get to that point, five years from now, with, you know, city ditch being fully piped and the, the reservoir being fully dredged. And the process being optimized through chemical addition and things like that, that Zach and his staff has also done. This ozone trailer becomes another one of these tools that we can use, um, to maybe address seasonal spikes and things like that. So if we get a three week period in September, because there's a, an algae bloom, we can mobilize the trailer, really start to hit it really hard. To knock those spikes down.
Great. I think that captures what I was actually trying to ask. So I appreciate you clarifying that. My question was a little clumsy, but that, that's helpful. This will be useful on an ongoing basis, even after we finish the improvements that we were currently making.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Potem?
Um, I guess my question may be for Director Van Rye as well. I was just wondering about, I lo- I know our, our citizens love hearing when, whenever we're doing something to kind of move the ball forward on taste and odor. Is there, you know, some way to communicate, you know, communicate this out to our, our citizens and know that we're installing this to continue the process of. Moving in the direction of fixing those problems? So, so I think the most immediate is through the, the website. So we've done a lot of work to get, um, uh, distinct. Projects associated with taste odor and hardness up on our website. Um, I think this is a, another one that will, will do something like, maybe we'll do a, um, a poster board or something like that for Neighborhood Nights this year. I think it's a really good one to illustrate, here's actual equipment and, and infrastructure that we've built, that we're buying and purchasing. To address taste and odor so that they can start to tie, um, actual, uh, improvements through the system to how they're experiencing the water. Coming out of their tap. So I think those are probably two of the, the most significant ways, but we'll also look at, um. Uh, uh, flow it forward, social media posts, things like that, um, to, uh, to, to. Have, to market it, not market it, but, um, to talk about it from a, um, from a larger suite of taste odor and hardness projects. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, Member Russ?
Thank you. Um, so my question is, are we certain that some of the taste and odor? Could not be coming from the delivery system, meaning the pipes in the ground?
We think that, uh, so, so what we're, so taste odor and hardness is a, is a system wide issue. And so we're not attacking it in just one, one location and then hoping, or, or, and then, and then going linearly in order. We're, we're addressing it in multiple different directions all at once to. In, in areas that we know are contributing based on what we've studied, what we've analyzed, what we've taken samples. Um, so that we can start to knock those things down altogether. Um, the distribution system is another area that we are, um, that we are gaining more knowledge of. Um, largely through the valve project, through the line breaks. When we have line breaks now, we take in, we take information from that break. Location to see what the pipe is. We have a, we have an issue throughout the system with unlined pipe. Um, so unlined iron pipe actually corrodes on the inside and that could be trapping these types of things. So, uh, we'll be coming to you in the next few months on a priority line that we've identified, which is, runs up and down Clarkson on the east side of our system. That is, that is really impacted that we have now put near the top of the list based on field, uh, work data that we've collected. So it's a, it's a system wide issue that has taken decades to, to build. And we're, we're hitting the, the high impact things out of the gate. And then as we start to learn more information about the distribution system, it's a little bit harder because it's, it's, it's harder to inspect. Um, we attack those as soon as we, we find them and prioritize them in the budget process.
I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, I greatly appreciate it. When the public is really going to appreciate it is when they turn on their tap and there is no taste or odor. And it may be a while before we get to that, but I do greatly appreciate everything you're doing.
Yeah, and, and I, I appreciate the, the, the recognition that this will take, it took us a long time to get here. It's going to take us some time to get out here. To get out of here, but we are taking a, a, an organized approach and based on data and good science and good information. And, and also prioritizing, you know, budget, budgetary restraints that we have because we can't just do everything all at once. To try and, to try and, um, do this systematically with the, the best benefit to the community.
I appreciate that. So could the lead's piece be playing into this also, or do we know that?
I, I, I don't believe that the lead is necessarily directly tied to taste odor and hardness. Lead's, lead's a different issue. It's more of a, um. It's a health and safety issue, uh, when that, that, that coating on the inside of those lead lines erodes away. Um, fortunately our coating, because we have, this is one of those odd things where the hardness of our water actually to some degree benefited us. Because it created a really nice thick layer of scale on the inside of those lead lines. Which is why when we're testing for lead, um, all of our numbers are coming below what the, what the limit is. Which is really, really good news and really good for our system. It still has the, the, the health exposure is still there as long as the lead line is there. Um, but I don't think it necessarily connects to taste odor and hardness as, as closely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions? See now can I get a motion to approve 11 C2?
Move to approve 11 C2.
Thank you, Member Ward. Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? Go ahead, um, go ahead, Member Ward.
I just want to extend my thanks to the department for the efforts you've made to analyze the issues with our water system and to implement some. Things that may address the issue more quickly than the major infrastructure improvements that we're working on. Um, I, I, I think this project has great promise and I'm proud to see the work of the department. And I'm looking forward to one day turning on my tap and, uh, having water that doesn't make me feel compelled to go to the store and buy bottles. Uh, so, uh, thanks for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Mr. Alabasi, thank you very much for your time tonight. Uh, up next is Mr. Marquez here to talk about the professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer for the Clarkson and Hampton Booster Pump Station Project.
Good evening, council members. My name's Adam Marquez. I'm Engineering Supervisor with, uh, Utilities. I need to find slides.
We're able to see it, but are we having issues up here? Actually, Member Wright just asked for a break and I think this might be a good time while we're working on the technical issues. Can we take a five minute break and come right back? So 9:40, 9:45, we'll be right back. So thank you everyone. So nine forty, nine forty-five, we'll be right back. So, thank you everyone.
I did a ride along a week ago. It's right after the Super Bowl. It was good though. I mean, it's, the, you know, one was in mental health. I think two were probably mental health because I asked Joe, he knew the one girl. Your friend Suzanne.
All right, council, we are now back. Mr. Marquez, I think we're bringing you back up for 11C3, the, uh, Clarkson and Hampton Booster Pump Station.
Thank you. This item is, uh, for the services, for the engineering construction services to support the Clarkson and Hampton Boost, Booster Pump Station, uh, construction project. Um, so brief background on the project itself. Um, we have a booster pump station, um, located in a below-grade vault on, uh, East Hampton Avenue and South Clarkson Street. Uh, this pump station boosts water pressure to the northeast corner of the city, uh, from our pressure zone one to our, uh, pressure zone three. It has obsolete electrical and controls equipment and aging pumps. Um, so the scope of work is to demolish and replace all the pumps and piping, uh, to install new flow and pressure meters, uh, to provide new electrical and controls that need to be moved above grade to meet, uh, modern electrical code, uh, to provide new HVAC and plumbing in the vault. And, uh, we will need to provide bypass pumping, uh, at, uh, another pump station, the Cornell and Penn, uh, pump station that is part of this project. Uh, we will also add new redundancies at the Clarkson and Hampton location, um, that include a, a disconnect where we can, um, provide backup power, uh, by generator if needed. And then at the, uh, Cornell and Penn pump station where we have to do bypass pumping, we'll leave some of that plumbing in place in case we ever need to, um, roll up a, uh, temporary, um, mobile pump, uh, at the Cornell and Penn's location. Uh, so this is an overview of our selection process for the construction project. Um, this was previously approved on the consent agenda earlier this evening. Um, Filon's was selected. Um, more information on that. Uh, and so this item is our engineering services during, during construction. The scope of work for this contract is to provide schedule review, um, to respond to requests for information by the contractor and issue field orders, uh, to perform submittal review and change order review as needed, uh, and to provide, uh, startup and commissioning support when we go to turn the new pumps on. And then finally the develop, um, record drawing so we have accurate as-built of the project. Um, so Hazen and Sawyer was selected. Um, they were competitively selected for design, um, for the RFP, uh, in, uh, 2021. Uh, we need a new contract for this, uh, construction phase. Uh, the total contract amount is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we're requesting a 10% staff managed contingency, therefore a total project authorization of a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you so much, Mr. Marquez, for the presentation. Any questions for members of council? See, now can I get a motion to approve 11C3?
I move to approve 11C3.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pring. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pring.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Mr. Marquez, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Director of Utilities, Director Van Rye, uh, here to speak on the contract for services with Corin Maine for the advanced metering infrastructure project.
Ah, good evening, Deputy Director Stone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Sarah Stone, Deputy Director for Business Solutions and Engineering for our Utilities Department. Uh, so this item tonight is a contract for services for advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI. I'll shorten it, uh, to AMI as I talk through the presentation. Um, so the background and purpose of this project, uh, is to replace outdated, um, meter infrastructure. So in the 2020 master plan, this was identified as a project that, um, needed to be completed to, um, upgrade and, um, modernize the metering system. Uh, this project was also identified and included in the WFIAP program loan. Um, so that is where the funding for this program comes from. Uh, so there, we have a total number of meters of 10,094. Uh, through this contract, there would be about 7,500, um, to be replaced and 2,500 or, uh, 2,557 to be retrofitted with AMI, um, components. And the reason we did that is to save on cost. Um, those meters in the, in that second category, they're under 10 years old. So we don't want to just replace them without being responsible, um, and, and letting them reach their, the end of their useful life. Uh, one of the main reasons that we need this, we need to complete this project is that spare parts and software is no longer supported for the existing meters. So this is where we, um, read ma- read the water usage and is very integral in our billing for, um, the utility department for both water and sewer services. Uh, these meters are also inefficient, uh, with the technology that's out there. We have, uh, field service technicians that are required to read 2,100 meters manually. Um, and then three weeks out of the month are spent on meter reading while only one week is spent on maintenance. So if we, um, move to this upgraded technology, that frees up some staff to work on, uh, other projects within the distribution system. So the scope of work, um, includes, uh, providing the media, meter equipment, uh, coordinating with residents and businesses for installation, uh, performing the, um, installation of indoor/outdoor meter sets, and then integration with the Cogstale billing system. Um, not included on this slide is, is the piece that utilities will perform, which is the public outreach piece. So because this is a project that affects, um, the billing of water usage, what we have found in talking with other water providers is that when projects like this are initiated, um, we're replacing out, um, meters that are slowed down. They can't, um, they don't read as accurately and they don't collect that low-flow situation. So as, um, these meters start to be replaced, we're actually capturing more accurately, accurately the water usage at each of these homes or businesses. So likely residents will see their water meter, or their water usage go up, therefore their bill is going to go up. So we have a plan for public outreach to discuss the situation, um, to really inform, uh, customers as that comes about. Uh, for the selection process, uh, the three bullets here, um, were the, um, criteria that we used for, um, when we put this out for RFP in August of 2023. Uh, so the project understanding and management approach, uh, project team experience and technical capability, overall proposal and quality and responsiveness, and then that last piece was, um, the low bid. So there were three contractors that proposed, we, um, selected Corin Maine. Um, you'll see the, on the right-hand side, the total, uh, proposal price. Corin Maine did have the lowest of the three. Um, during the selection process, we interviewed Corin Maine based on their proposal and then asked, you know, what could we do to reduce the proposal cost? Because it was higher than we had budgeted for and, um, higher than we, than we wanted to authorize. So, um, the revised proposal was four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars less. Um, and the reason that we, um, or, or the reason that it went down is partly because of that, um, those 2,500 meters that we aren't going to replace because they're less than 10 years old. And then also we would, um, use staff to make some of these replacements as, uh, to save on cost. So the total revised contract amount is three million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. And so our, um, recommendation is to approve this contract with Corin Maine. Um, I'll just note that, because it's not on this slide here, that this was approved by the Water and Sewer Board at the January 9th, 2024 meeting. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director, for the, uh, presentation. Member Wright.
Good evening. Um, I just have a couple of questions, please. So once the new meter's in place, um, you mentioned that, you know, the meters may not be reading correctly. Could a business or a resident receive a bill that says, oh, we weren't billing you correctly? And suddenly they get a big bill or a big credit? Or will the city go ahead and absorb whatever that was?
So, um...
So, so anything prior to the installation, we're not, we're not gonna go back and say, you know, we should have been billing you X dollars because it was under reading. Um, so it would be from the point forward. We don't anticipate significant changes to bills unless they're, they're larger meters, a normal, normal-sized meter. Um, some people might see it go up a bit because those old meters, what happens is the really low flows don't get picked up by the meter. And so essentially what's happening is if they're using water really slowly, they're getting free water. So the, the user's actually not paying for the water and the rest of us are all paying for that water because the meter doesn't read properly. This fixes that. This gets us accurate, um, new accurate meters and, and gets it on a rotation where we're replacing them before they deteriorate to the point where they're, they're not capturing the flows accurately. And then also allows us to, um, to collect that information much more efficiently than the way we do it today through that, that electronic sender.
And that makes sense. So there, it'd be exceptional if someone would deserve a credit for...
We, we've, we've had a couple of instances, um, and Water and Sewer Board have, um, uh, been part of this where, where through either a customer figuring it out on their own or our own internal auditing process, have figured out where there was a potential overbilling to where, um, a customer was due a credit. And we've made a few payments back to, um, customers because of that. It usually happens on larger meter sizes. And the reason why is because when you set up a larger meter size, there's a programming code that goes into how it, how it calculates that we've noticed, we found a couple of errors. One, I think, uh, uh, the customer brought it to our attention. One, our, our billing, um, uh, our billing staff was looking through the numbers and saw something that didn't look right. After further investigation, realized that years ago it got set up wrong.
Hmm.
Um, in those instances, we, we go by the, the state of Colorado statute where we'll, we'll refund back to two years, uh, based on that.
Okay. Um, now, I know we're doing the lead line, looking at that in the real near future. When the lead lines are being replaced, is the cost of doing the meter at the same time baked into this? Because we're looking at what, approximately 3,000 lead lines?
Yes.
Is that going to be done at the same time to save us money also, or did you say that?
So, so two different, so two different things, and the answer is sometimes. And, and the reason why I say sometimes is the, the system right now has a significant number of what are called inside meter sets. So they're inside a crawl space, they're inside the home, there's something like that. Um, as part of the lead service line project, part of what we want to do is we want to move as many of those to outside meter sets. So it's a meter pit in the front yard. Um, so if we're looking at lead service lines themselves, or if it's a flat rate line that's, um, going from a flat rate to a metered service, which there's around 1,200 of those, those we would look to put into an outside meter set. Um, this funds the meter itself and the, and the electronic sending of the information. That just unbolts and then you pull the old one out and you pull the new one, put the new one in. Whether it's a lead service line or a non-led service line, there's not really an economy of scale there. It's only if we decide to move it, move the location of the meter and that lead, that lead program affords us that opportunity to look at doing that in, in, in those instances. We'll still have a number of meters that throughout the city, there are still inside meter sets. And that could be a, a, um, longer-term program that we look at, uh, potentially funding if that's something the council wants to do. Um, because right now it's a mixed bag. So we have some that are inside, we have some that are outside.
Okay. So, so you're, if I understand, you're looking to put all meters outside compared to mixed in and out with this?
We haven't, no, well, well.
Okay, sorry.
We haven't proposed that as a policy direction.
Okay.
As something to bring to council and say, would you like us to do this? Because of the costs associated with that.
Okay.
What we, what we are seeing is that we can, we can do this as part of the leads, as a component of the lead service line, so it makes sense to do it with that group. But in terms of citywide, we haven't brought that to the council because there is a cost to that. There's a, and, and that's not factored into our, our financial plans right now. But if we want to make it something that we want to look at longer term, then that would be something that we bring to council and then next time we do, uh, probably it'd be something we consider the next time we do. Then next time we do, probably it'd be something we consider the next time we do a full comprehensive master planning effort, which would be next year, because that'll be the five-year mark of our, of our water and sewer master plan. So that'd be something we'd look at at that, at that point in time.
Okay. So the residents that you're going to now and the business and stuff, how are you going to afford? How are you going to, you know, speak to them and inform them that you may need access to their house or their basement? And how much lead timer can give them? Because we know how people feel about their property and, you know, their privacy.
And so, so we do that every week, every month right now. Because if, if we go back, so you see, so you see that little white thing that's on the meter? That's a, it's called an ERT, it's a, it's electronic sender and they die. And so we, so the, the meter staff spends part of their week reading meters, but a significant amount of their time is going into homes to replace a dead ERT. We buy thousands of these every year to have on, to have on, in our inventory, or maybe hundreds. In our inventory, because every time there's a zero read, we then notify the customer. We work with the customer to let them know, hey, we need to replace the sender unit because the sender unit is dead. Because it, what it does is it creates a zero read bill. So if a customer doesn't respond to our inquiries to do that, one of the, how we, what we do is we, we then estimate the bill. And so as we estimate the bill, each month that goes by that we have no contact from that, that customer, we double the bill. And then what happens is we eventually get to a point where people notice it because their bill has gone up substantially. And then they contact us and say, we need to get out there to replace the sender unit. Because at, in those instances, we don't have any ability to read the bill or know how much water they're using because we can't, we can't capture it. And so we don't necessarily, we've only done that a few times, right? So it's, it's very rare that we do that. And every time we do it, someone just didn't realize that they were, that we were trying to contact them. And then as soon as we figure out what the, what the meter would have been reading and sending, we then issue them a credit of what that difference was.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Member Ward?
I think similar to Member Wright, I have some process concerns here. I wasn't at the Water and Sewer Board meeting where this was approved. And we've, we've talked in the past about, you know, entering people's homes and securing their consent. I don't see any change to our current code associated with this. This is just simply a contract approval. I think ultimately my question is, is very similar to the question she just asked. You know, at, at the most recent Water and Sewer Board meeting, we talked about lead line replacement. And as a component of that, meter replacement was included. And I, I think what I'm not quite grasping here is why those two items are not connected tonight. When that process seems to be somewhat cleaner. We're talking, based on the estimate here, about forty-five hundred inside meters, which means, you know, roughly forty-five hundred times we're, we're going into presumably a house because these are three-quarter inch sets. And, and making a change to the meter there. One of the goals that was presented at the most recent Water and Sewer Board meeting was to move these meters outside. So I'm not grasping why we're not doing that as a component of, of this particular project. You mentioned cost, but it seems like it would be a much more efficient and less disruptive process to our customers to enter their home once, uh, to remove the meter rather than entering their home twice, particularly for those customers who might be reluctant to allow anyone in their home.
So, and, and, and thank you for that. I think this is a, a component of several aspects of the service line that we are trying to modernize. There's the lead aspect of it, is where the meter is set, and then there's the meter itself. And so this project allows us to address the meter itself. And it does cost more to move it from an outside meter set to, or to, from an inside meter set to an outside meter set. We did not budget that. We did not put that as far, this is already a, a three-point-six million dollar project that was, um, which was right around what our budget was. But if we had to add thousands of, of move from inside meter set to outside meter set, we could, we're talking several hundred thousand to potentially millions of dollars. Because now you're digging up people's front yards to put in a meter pit. And there's, there's just, there's infrastructure associated with, infrastructure improvements associated with doing that. So we may do that if that's something that they, that the council wants to do. We don't necessarily need to do that right now. And as we're looking at, we're, we're checking off the priorities of what are the things that need to happen now. Lead service lines, we think, need to happen because of a, because it's a health and, it's a, it's a health risk to our customers. The meter modernization, we have so many meters that are, that are past their useful life and aren't capturing the reads properly and aren't capturing the, the water flow properly. Which means if someone's got a really old meter, they're probably getting free water that the rest of us are paying for. And so we're trying to fix that. And the way we're trying to do that, we're trying to do that in a way that, that also eliminates the, the twenty-one hundred meters that we have to go out and read manually. So we're, we're jumping over a technology advancement that we have partially implemented through the city, which is the, the meters that you can read remotely with the, from the street. This basically is a system that allows us to read remotely from, um, through, through the use of cell towers. And it, by switching to this, it, it takes care of that, that accurate billing issue. It takes care of the, um, modernizing the meter equipment itself. It takes care of these, these ERTs that, that keep dying on us. Could we have packaged it all together? Yes, and I think that would have, it would have created more of a cost burden that we would have then had to go and say, well, you know, maybe we don't do the ozone trailer. So as we're trying to figure out what are the things that get us the most bang for our buck across the entire system? Because as we've talked about, this entire system has had a lack of investment across the board, whether it's lead service lines, whether it's the distribution system, whether it's the plant, whether it's the booster pump stations, whether it's meter system, the lead service lines across, the taste and odor. We're trying to advance the things that we think incrementally get us the best bang for the buck. In a perfect world, we do it all at once. We just, just, we just took this as an, as a parallel incremental approach because we think it made the most sense.
So my, my second question is the thing that still isn't quite connecting for me. And also something that Member Wright made reference to. You've told us in the past with regard to lead service lines, that any disruption of the lead service line, we need to replace the whole thing. Presumably some of these meters are attached to lead service lines. So why would we be disturbing the, the lead service line in order to replace the meter without replacing the lead service line at the same time?
So when we've talked about, sorry, when we've talked about disturbing lead service lines, in, in the context of lead service line, what we've, what we've talked about is cutting the line to insert a new, insert a new meter or something like that, or insert a new connection with that system. In this instance, if you look at the picture, you can see that the meter actually is connecting to a brass fitting and a brass fitting. So we unscrew it and then we, we screw it back in. So there's not a disturbance to the actual lead service line itself. Like when I, when you've heard me talk about that before, I'm talking about physical disturbances to the actual line itself. This is we, we pull the old meter out and we put the new one in and we tighten it up. It's very, it's a very minimal disruption to the system because it's designed to, they're designed to be removed and replaced.
I think I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Member Wright, do you have another question?
I do. I just have one more. With Title sixteen being updated and ADUs essentially being allowed on nearly all residential properties, with these new meters going in, is that allowing or prepping for the addition of ADUs? Let's say you have, in, in my layman's thinking and terms here, you have a half-inch pipe. If they're putting in an ADU and they have to put in a bigger pipe, would that meter serve? Or should we be prepping as though people are going to be putting ADUs on all their properties in the future?
So, so given the size of, so, so a typical residential service line is three-quarters of an inch. And that three-quarters of an inch will supply a lot of water. And given the historic size of homes in, in the city of Englewood, which are typically smaller homes, if you add an ADU to a home, or to, to a home's usage, it doesn't, it doesn't push against the threshold of what's allowed for a, a typical three-quarter inch meter set or a three-quarter inch service line. If you think about, you know, larger suburban areas where, you know, people have three and four thousand, five thousand square foot homes, they're served off a three-quarter inch meter. And so if you're in Englewood, typical homes oftentimes are a thousand to two thousand square feet. If there's a, if there's a thousand square foot ADU, you're, you're still at the low end of what other water districts have as their typical customer. Because, you know, in suburbia, the houses get bigger. And so as it relates to flow restriction from an ADU, given the nature of how our housing is set up today, we don't anticipate that that would create a problem. And, and so the ADU would be connected downstream of, of the meter. So it's capturing all the flow for both the home and the ADU.
So if you have a basement that you turn into ADU, five-eighths inch water meter would be enough to support both upstairs, downstairs?
More than enough, yes.
All right, thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. So how long do we anticipate it's going to take us to complete this project, retrofitting those and replacing the other ones?
So the bulk of the project we anticipate to be completed by the end of the year. That's correct, right? Okay, that's correct. So, so one year, one year for that. Like with any project like this, we're going to have instances where there'll be unique circumstances that we have to work through. And those unique circumstances will, will be that, those, those residual, um, um, things that we work through over time. But the bulk of the project is, is a year.
So is this project necessary to complete because of the Cogstale billing system? I mean, will this enable us to use the Cogstale billing system totally?
So it enhances the work that we're doing to modernize the billing system. So this modernizes the physical infrastructure that collects the information for the bill. The Cogstale system actually modernizes how that is calculated and bills are sent out. And, and where these two work together is with AMI, there's, there's, the customer has the ability to utilize a web portal to have a, have much more insight into what their water usage is. So whereas in our current water bill, you have to wait month to month to figure out what they're, what we're, what you're using and it's retroactive to the previous month. And so you might go thirty days without realizing that you had a leak in your system and then you get a bill and there's a huge number. With AMI, people can monitor, you know, sometimes down to an hourly usage rate of what they're, what they're using. And so it's really helpful from a customer perspective to understand when they might have system anomalies, like a leak or something like that, like a leaky toilet. Leaky toilets don't seem like they use a lot of water, but they use a lot of water. And so this will allow the customer to have much more direct insight to what they're using. And that is complemented through the Cogstale system, which will help, um, which will help with those portals and that connection to their actual bill.
Okay. So this metering system, we could use a different billing system than Cogstale, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So once we get this completed, will it all be automated and Cogstale will work?
It's, it's, well, I, I don't want to commit to anything on the Cogstale project because that has been a challenge. But it is interesting how it's all converging all at once. I, right now, Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about? We are in, we are in the last stages of testing. So here's the whole thing with that billing system. We want to make sure it's right before we start sending out a whole bunch of bills. You could go too fast with this project, send out a bunch of bills and have just a multitude of problems. So we want to make sure that it is as right as we possibly think it can be before we make this monumental shift. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about where we're at in that process.
Okay, so just one, one other thing. So we actually could move forward with the Cogstale billing system before we're complete with this project.
Yeah, and, and we will be.
Okay.
This will just help, this will help inform what the bill part of it, which goes to the customer. The, the two work together, but they can also work independently of each other.
Okay, thank you. Now, now Sarah can.
Sarah, are you able to be fast on this item or?
Yes, yeah, yes. So just an update, we are in the final stages of testing. So we're in that mock go-live where we're comparing what the results from the current billing system will give us compared to what the new billing system will give us. And we are, we've, last week, the billing staff ran a full cycle, so one of our quadrants of billing. And that was, that matched, so we, that's good news. We are now moving on to, okay, does that carry all the way through? Does that get to the customer portal in a way that is correct and that can be viewed online? And those are two different systems talking to each other, and that's where we're struggling a little bit. I am very hopeful that by the end of March, all that testing will be complete and we will be going live.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Any further questions for members of council? CNN, can I get a motion to approve eleven C four?
I move to approve eleven C four.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Any further comments? Member Ward?
Uh, thank you for the staff presentation. I believe it adequately captures both the intent and the necessity of this project. That said, I, I do have some larger policy concerns that I think this council should make a priority to discuss. We've talked in the past, and I've shared some of my concerns, and I may be in the minority on this, about the provisions in our city code, which compel residents to allow entrance from city officials into their home to accomplish various tasks related to the delivery of utilities to the residents. As I read our city code, it doesn't have any protections to the resident. It doesn't require notification to the resident, it doesn't require coordination with the resident. I understand and I trust that our staff is doing that because that's been explained to me. Nevertheless, I'm uncomfortable crafting laws or granting my approval to laws or policies that don't provide what I view to be adequate protection to our residents. Because at some point, we may have different leadership in charge of our utilities department, leadership that feels much less cooperative with our residents than, than the current leadership does. And absent some sort of statutory requirement that the utility operate in a certain manner, it opens the possibility of decisions which place an undue burden on our residents and arguably violate their rights. And, um, so I'm, I'm not prepared to withhold my vote on this tonight based upon those concerns because I trust this department to execute this project in a way that honors the needs of our residents. Nevertheless, I would like to push that policy forward if it's more appropriate for me to address that during members' choice tonight. I think we need to have a study session to talk about potential changes to the municipal code relative to times when city employees can or cannot enter a residence without the residence' consent.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Wright?
I concur with Member Ward. I strongly believe in resident rights. And I agree that we do need to speak with that further. But I do also believe that we need to press forward on, I guess this would be part of our infrastructure to a degree in making sure that the city is paid accurately on the water usage that is taken, you know, used by each individual resident. So there is a checks and balances there, but I do agree with you a whole lot of delight.
Member Russell?
I appreciate, um, um, Member Ward and Member Wright's concerns. I agree at, at this point in time, I believe this is the project where, is this the one where we are allowing voluntary responses? Is this the one we were talking about?
So, so this would be one that, um, right now, this one would operate under our code as it exists now, which is because. which is because if, if you go back to the E R T, that, that electronic center, this is just more of a modernization of that system that we already interface with our customer in and have for, for decades. Hearing the, the concerns around what we've, what we've heard from both council here and at the Water and Sewer Board relative to how the code was written in the eighties versus the concern about how we're, how we're leading the utility today versus what protects the customer in the future. I think that we will take that into account as we implement this project. Additionally, as we move forward with the lead service line program, we can look at a, a more, more prescriptive notification process and, and escalating process that probably wasn't thought of in the eighties when the code was originally written, hasn't been looked at in years, hasn't really had to be implemented a lot. But recognizing that there is a concern, we'll bring that back to council as part of the, the lead program. Because I, because I think we're hearing that from council and it, and it does make sense to get that captured. If that, if that helps.
I, I do appreciate that and, and I agree that we should go back to look at that. And I think that there is another project coming forward that the Water Board put on hold till next week because of this very thing. And I think that it would be a good idea to address it all together and go back and readjust our code. It may be a little bit different than what we're going to do with the other thing, but.
And that was specific to the lead service line. That's, that's the one that we held, that we tabled at Water and Sewer Board. So whereas this one doesn't operate differently than how we normally operate, it does highlight a more, a more codification of what we practice in terms of how we interface with our customer, which, which in, for our practical purposes, we afford them, you know, all kinds of notice and, and all those kinds of things, but it's not written down. So we hear that.
Alright. Alright, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was going to make that part of council member's choice later on tonight, but I think there's nothing else to add after the comments by three council members. So with that, can we please vote?
Member Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you very much, staff, for that presentation. Moving on to eleven C five, contract to surveying and mapping LLC for the South Inwood Storm Sewer Inventory and Condition Assessment. Do we got Deputy Director Hoss back again?
Get the presentation for this one. I got a brief presentation to go over what this contract's for and then I'll answer any questions you have about this. This is our surveying and mapping contract for the south half of the city. If you recall, last year, we did the north half of the city, north of two eighty-five. We had the same firm map all of the storm sewer in that area of the city for us and get all the manholes and connections and pipe sizes and types together for us. So we had that data to, to understand how the system works and what, what all the different pipes are that we have in the system. So this is just a continuation of basically going to finish off the city. It'll get the south half of the city done. So we'll have the information for the whole city once this is done. So yeah, we basically, what, what they do is they, they go through and they, they look at all the, find all the manholes. If they can't find them, we get them raised so they can find the manhole, see what kind of pipes going in, what kind of pipes going out, check the size. And then they get it, uh, this is more of the mapping. The, the second contractor will go over here is more of the companion cleaning, but this is more to map and just get that connectivity for us so we can put it in our G I S system and have a map and all that information and data there of what pipes are where and what types they are and that kind of thing. So, and it helps us to, uh, once we get this information to kind of understand what needs replacement, how much corrugated pipe we have versus concrete and that kind of thing to, to be able to make decisions based on the, the inventory of the system that the city has. So the funding for this, uh, last year, the, the north half of the city was one seventeen. This is about one thirty-one. The south half of the city, it's bigger geographically, but there's not, the, the piping length and the number of pipes is not quite as dense as the north half of the city. So it's a little bit more costly, but it's a quite a bit bigger area we're going to be covering here. But the funding source is the Stormwater Fund there to be able to, to pay for this work. And there, there's enough budgeted in there to cover the cost of this. And then with that, we recommend that we, uh, City Council order contract to the surveying, mapping LLC for completion of this storm sewer inventory and condition assessment throughout the city. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Deputy Director Hoss. Um, Member Ward?
You mentioned the north survey and you mentioned as a part of this, uh, finding and raising manholes is necessary. Do, do we have currently any idea how many manholes we have in this city that have been paved over?
Oh, boy. I don't have that number. I would say it's, we probably find maybe ten to twenty a year, I guess. I think in the north half is about ten to twenty we had to raise.
Okay, that answers my second question, which was what the result in the, in the north half was.
Yeah, and the, the south, I would assume it's something like that. But yeah, there's, uh, yeah, it's, it varies depending on the block in the area. But usually around ten to twenty a year, we find that we've got to expose. And that's what the second contract's for is to have a companion contractor go through and do that for the guys doing the mapping. Cause they don't raise manholes, they just open them and look in them. If it's not exposed, then they can't get in it.
Okay, so we're looking in the manholes. Are we physically entering the manholes as part of this project as well?
No, they actually have a camera they put down there and they can see everything they need. It's a pole camera. They can see the type of pipe and measure the diameter and get all that data for us.
Great, thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. So did they, did, after the twenty eighteen flood, did we do anything like this or was it mostly cleaning the pipes and checking for problems? It wasn't really mapping services, correct?
Correct, yeah. They, they just did cleaning and making sure they were all, yeah, functioning. But yeah, there, there was no real mapping at that time. We used the, the plans and things we had to find all the pipes. And there, I think there were a couple manholes that needed to be raised, but that was more just to make sure what's there is clean and then can take the maximum amount of flow for the pipe diameter.
So in the mapping process, are we also mapping underground lines? I mean, will we find in the process of mapping if there's bottlenecks anywhere that we may not be aware of now?
That is exactly right. That's the type of stuff we find is that kind of where there's a little piece of six inch in between a couple pieces of twelve inch and all this is a problem, right? And that's, those are the types of things we identify with. That's what's so valuable about getting this data. We can really, you know, get that low hanging fruit, so to speak, and get some of those things fixed to where we just need to, you know, upsize a pipe here and there and make it function so much better. So this is really helpful to understand that connectivity and the type and size of pipes we have to make sure we, we have consistency throughout the system.
Okay, so I appreciate this. I do, I, I do agree. There are constituents that, and this is true, we have not upsized our water pipes or storm drains all over. But this mapping project could be part of that process or no?
Well, it's, it's going to inform what we need to upsize and where we maybe have issues. And the, uh, the other part of it too, the, the other contractor in the second contract, they video every pipe. They clean it and video it. So then this mapping company does, they look at every one of those videos and they rate every pipe for us and tell us what condition it is. So we will get a sense of what is, you know, gone and it is worn out, needs to be replaced, what's, what's serviceable. And we can understand really quickly where the weak spots in the system are and get those replaced as, as quick as we can.
Okay, I appreciate those answers. Thank you.
Member Wright?
Real quickly, so the first contractor we're discussing now with Sam, they're not doing the videoing. They're just going to get from the second contract we'll discuss, they'll get it and do the mapping and look at the video, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll save some of those questions. Now, from all of the consultants we have had, which we have Caliber, H D R, I don't know who else from twenty eighteen, several, do we have videos from the storm drains and stuff like that that could have been used or will they be compared by Sam also?
No, there, there was not any previous video. This is the first video we're getting of all the pipe. The, uh, the information they used was the diameter of the pipe and the type of pipe. There wasn't actual video of the condition of it. It was more of the, what we have there now to see if it needs to be upsized to take the flow. But there, there has not been previous video. This contract is the, the one we've used to get all the video.
So the, the previous consultants just used what information to get their?
Well, they, they were more concerned about the size rather than the condition.
So they used historical information from the seventies to come to their conclusions?
No, no, they definitely opened the manholes, got the size of the pipe. But they, they were more concerned about the size to make sure it had the capacity for the flows we needed to carry through there. They weren't necessarily concerned about the condition. It was more, is it big enough? Do we need to upsize it or not?
Okay, okay. Okay, so this will be the first time we actually have video. Okay, that's what I needed to know. Alright, and then I'll save my other questions. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
One more question about manholes. I note, I note on the map of the project, there's, there's manholes marked on the map. That leads me to believe that we know where all the manholes are supposed to be already?
Correct.
Okay, so we do have some limited map of the current infrastructure.
We do, and we use those maps to try to pinpoint where the manhole is probably buried at. You know, you can kind of triangulate a little bit and say, okay, right, right. And that, that is a bit of a challenge sometimes to figure out where do we need to dig the hole to find this manhole. You know, you gotta line things up and okay, assume that goes straight, that goes straight. We're, we're going to try here. And sometimes they don't always get it right and you have to do a second hole. But it's, usually they can figure it out by just looking at the alignments and kind of triangulating. And it's got to be right here. And sometimes they're back in a bush or something and you, it's just funny how they, they sometimes hide. But we, uh, we, we usually find all of them. We, we do find all of them and we're able to. That's what's so valuable about this. We'll have everything exposed and accessible. And if we ever need to maintain it, it, the whole system will be degraded again to where we can access every manhole and every pipe.
Great, thank you.
Our other mayor, Pro Tem. Go ahead.
Uh, does this include, um, are you, are you measuring rim elevations and inverts? Or is this just location and diameters?
So it will include the depth of the manholes. It doesn't, I don't believe it has an absolute elevation, but it will give us a depth, which does help us to kind of understand the slope and kind of how the pipe carries down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? CNN, can I get a motion to approve eleven C five?
Move to approve eleven C five?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pring. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Member Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Moving on to eleven C six. We have the contract to pro pipe for the South Inwood Storm Sewer Inventory and Condition Assessment. Go ahead, Director, Deputy Director.
Great, thank you. I've got a brief presentation on this one as well, then I'll take any questions. So this is the companion contract to actually clean, televise and raise any manholes we need for the mapping company to be able to do the work they need to do. And, and what it includes is that they're going to clean every pipe we have and televise every pipe we have. Once the mapping company tells them where it is, they're going to get it cleaned. And then we'll have that connection data there to know this is where the pipe is, this is the condition of it. And we'll be able to really dial in where those weak spots are. And what it includes is that we've already done the trunk lines a few years ago. This is all twenty-four inch diameter and smaller that they're going to be cleaning and basically the rest of the system that we haven't done yet. And then basically south of two eighty-five once again. And the, uh, the video will be provided to Sam, the other company there to, they will view every video and categorize, categorize the condition for us and tell us which ones are good, which ones are bad, which ones we need to, to think about replacing sooner than later. And then they'll raise any buried manholes that we find. So that, which is very valuable because without that, we can't, can't access the pipe and get the, get it cleaned and televised. So the funding on this, uh, we do have a little bit more funding in this this year. We have a three hundred thousand. It's, uh, the way this is caused is it's by the foot of pipe that they clean. So it's, we, we have a rough estimate, but if they find more pipes than we, we think we have, then it sometimes goes a little higher. That's kind of what happened last year. We had a little more footage than we realized when they mapped everything out. We actually found some new pipes that we didn't know connected and that was valuable information. But it, it does take a little more. So we, we have recommended a little bit of higher maximum contract amount this year to be able to make sure we can get everything done. And once again, it's funded through the Storm drainage fund, which has adequate budget for the, for the cost of this work. And with that, yeah, we recommend that this contract be ordered to pro pipe for the clean camera and manhole adjustment contract to make sure we can get everything mapped in the storm sewer system. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions to start? Member Wright? Go ahead.
Will CCTV show cracks and voids around pipes?
Correct, yes, it will.
Okay, would sonar be a better alternative since sewer, you know, when they're doing the sewer system, there would be water in it and CCTV wouldn't necessarily show that where sonar would?
Um, it, it kind of depends on what they find. I guess they may be able to follow up with sonar sometimes if they find an area that's questionable. They may try that technology to see if they can figure out a little better what's going on there. But it typically, they start with the video and then we go from there. If we need a little more information, we can dig into it.
So in the contract, it would have, if need be, sonar would be used?
Uh, it's not in the contract. It's something we can include if we need to. And the, like I said, it's unit pricing in there. So I, I think that's something we could add if we had to, to, to figure out a little more. If there was a questionable area, we could certainly use other technology to figure it out.
Okay, and then with manholes, the people that do the paving of the streets and stuff obviously covered the manholes. Do we have like a guarantee of work that they don't do this? And before they're paid, paid, maybe in the future, I don't know if it may be too late, that we put this in the contract that if you do this, you, you are responsible for uncovering the manholes and this type of thing? I mean, tin, tin manholes could be a big thing when we're trying to clean out our storm drains and our sewer systems and stuff like that.
I mean, that is in our new paving specifications, yeah, you, you can't pave over our manholes, right? We mark them out. We know where they are. If, if it's paved over, they're going to fix it before they leave. We don't, we don't let contractors leave that anymore, that, that's important. Especially after we do this work to get them raised, we don't want to get them buried again. So it is, uh, something that we definitely are mindful of.
Yeah, it, it's an old school type of, old, oh, what do they call it? Old guard issue, I think. So, um, okay, thank you.
Member Ward?
Sorry, back to manholes. In previous discussions, it's, it's been alluded to, if not actually stated, that the manholes that are currently paved over were actually paved over by city crews, not by contractors. And that may predate your tenure here, but I'm wondering if, if we can actually confirm that because that's what I've heard.
That's my understanding, yeah. I, I think it was maybe five to six years ago that the, the city switched to a contractor doing the mill overlay work. So I, I think before that, that was historically done by city crews and there could have been some, some of that. That's my understanding anyway.
Thank you.
Any further questions? CNN, can I get a motion to approve eleven C six?
I'll put a motion through.
Thank you, Member Wright. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the long night, Deputy Director Hoss. A lot of questions asked, so thank you so much for that. Alright, moving on to general discussion, mayor's choice. I'll be, I'll try to be fast just with the lateness in the hour. So it was kind of brought up, I'll, I'll just touch on it first since Member Ward and two other council members brought it up. But it was a discussion that we had during the Water and Sewer Board last week where there was an item that's supposed to be on the agenda tonight. But we, uh, but we basically tabled it until the next Water and Sewer Board meeting. But basically it had to do with just entry into the homes and the fact that that's in our code. There was a second section that we decided to break off from that. But it sounds like at least three members of council want to have the discussion about that code. Is there a fourth member of council that wants to have that conversation as part of a study session? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I would be happy to, to have, I appreciate the concern. I don't know where I'll have, um, I'd have to review the codes again before I say it. But I think it's an important, important discussion to have.
So we'll add that as part of a study session item in the future. But yeah, basically my updates were going to be about, uh, boards and commissions. So that was Water and Sewer Board. That was a long discussion. Obviously you saw the extent of how long it was here as well. So just a lot of topics covered during the last Water and Sewer Board meeting. Met with the Sustainability Board as well last Tuesday. There was an update by Stephanie Ellis from the Utilities Department giving a overview of the city ditch project. One of the questions that came up outside of that was just the retention pond that's going to be going in or the detention pond that's going to be going in on, on Windermere and I always forget the, the other street there. Radcliffe, yeah. Anyway, uh, but just the fact that there's a recommendation, staff asked for their recommendation on plants and that kind of got tabled just because we weren't sure, we weren't sure if Parks and Rec was looking into that. But there was a lot of conversation around that. And then you guys may be seeing some updates within social media, also in person, but, or to your house. But there's some gas stove fly- But there's some gas stove flyers that just show the safety or safety concerns with gas stoves. But those are gonna be handed out by uh city staff as well to all the, um, all the homes around the city. And I wanted to give this update the last time around, but I meet with Swedish Quarterly. This was the Community Advisory Council meeting. They basically gave an update on twenty twenty-three and what their plans are for twenty twenty-four. Long story short, um, there's a lot of, a lot of groups within that committee. Um, Emily Griffith's there, Denver Public Schools is part of that meeting, Inglewood Schools is part of that meeting. One of the, one of their pain points right now is just the shortages of nurses, uh nurses. And there's different programs available that they're looking to uh kick off. And obviously with the conversation with those three groups specifically, they were looking at ways to kind of bring engagement there. But um, but yeah, Swedish is doing, uh, they were named a top one hundred hospital by Fortune P I N C. Um, spr- uh stroke care program is top notch, sperm program is top notch. Uh, so there were just a lot of positives that was coming out of some of the accolades that they received over the, the years. So with that, uh, actually the other thing I want to do, uh, one of the things Public Works, I saw that they were out there patching potholes around the city. So really appreciate that, cause I know there's quite a few in the cities. So with that, I'll pass it out to any other uh member of council that has anything for council member's choice. Member Ward?
Just a couple of follow-ups uh related to the public comment that we received tonight. Uh, the first one, I think, may be somewhat low hanging fruit, um, which is the city's policy on tobacco use in parks and whether or not that is binding under uh municipal code or law. Um, as I, as I said during public comment, I, I distinctly recall that. Um, I'm a person who likes to go to the park sometimes when the weather is nice and do some work or read and smoke a cigar. And uh, I'm very concerned that I might be in violation of the Inglewood Municipal Code um by doing that. And to the extent that I can exercise my authority as a member of this council to uh change that policy, I would like to see that done. Uh, but I'm not entirely certain that it's actually binding policy under our current provisions of the code. Um, secondly, um, I'll, I'll note first that uh the city manager and I have talked a number of times behind the scene about uh the police department's policies and procedures surrounding the release of public records. Um, based upon um some recent feedback that we have received, uh, I th- I think it may be time uh for this council to exercise the policy pin. And uh, I would like to request a study session uh in regards to the possibility of um adopting uh specific uh policies, either by ordinance or otherwise, um related to how we respond to uh public records requests under the uh, I think it's the Criminal Justice Records Act. Uh, the state law grants wide discretion uh to law enforcement agencies to release or not release uh certain records and as well as how much they charge. Um, ultimately, I would like to see this body adopt some very direct and instructive policies and procedures um related to that, uh owed to my fundamental and unchangeable belief that the people actually own those records. Um, and I, I feel at times that there's a misunderstanding over who actually owns those records. Um, so uh, I would like to see that come forward for a study session. Uh, I don't know if I have three other members who would consent to such. Um, but I, I think this is a timely discussion and it's a very important discussion because it deals with um a number of issues, not the least of which is the faith that the general public has in the law enforcement and the members of law enforcement that are tasked with the duty to protect the community.
Thank you, Member Ward. Let's pause there and just see, are there three other members? Go ahead, Member Wright.
I fully support that um and agree one hundred percent.
Thank you. Member Russell?
I agree as well. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else?
I support having that discussion.
Yep, okay. So we'll get that on the calendar as well. Perfect. Anything else, Member Ward?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then the city policy on tobacco parks, was that just a council request?
Correct. I, I would need clarification on that before I would bring it forward for any further discussion.
All right, uh, Member Wright, go ahead.
Um, and part of that study session, part of that discussion, um, I would like to add the discussion over the cost if someone is getting body cam footage and stuff like that. Um, I believe Ms. Benson said something about six hundred dollars or something like that. And um, I think there needs to be clear parameters and something more reasonable or something like that. So um, I would like that added to it also, um, please.
Perfect. All right, we can do that. Um, Member Prang, go ahead.
Um, so I'd like to see if I could get support from council to direct the city attorney's office to provide some analysis and recommendations around our boards and commissions process and just the number of boards and commissions that we have. I feel like we've touched on the conversation and I'm not sure that it's come back to um council. So I'd just like to see some examination of the process and maybe some recommendations about how we could streamline our process here in Inglewood.
In what, in what regard? I'm trying to understand.
Just, just the, the staff time that's taken, um, some of the burden on the city itself and whether we could shift some of that or have more appropriate bodies be looking at applications and potentially making recommendations to council versus us doing.
Also, the actual process of electing or placing boards and commission members onto?
But I think we've ha- also had some discussion around the number of boards and commissions in Inglewood in comparison to other cities, so.
We do have quite a bit, so. Okay, um, are there three other, that's a study session request? Are there three other members?
I, I would support that. I would support it.
Okay, anyone else? Member Noonan Camp?
I'm open to having a conversation if we have the right number of boards and commissions. I'm probably not as open about appointments. Um, but I, I think if there's something we can do to uh ensure that we have the best system possible, I'm open to looking at that.
Okay. Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I, I like our process for appointing members, but I know specifically with regards to the reti- some of the retirement boards and those.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any way to combine those, we've had some discussion about that. So I'd like to see that discussed at the very least.
Right, okay. Um, yeah, I would be in favor of that as well. I g- I guess the, the one aspect that, that you brought up was just the staff time. I'd like to get a little bit more clarity on what the concern is there. I wouldn't mind understanding that a little bit more uh as part of the council uh request. But I do like how we're appointing members, but, all right. Are you good with that, Member Prang? Okay. Anyone else? All right, city managers report. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, go ahead, Member Russell.
I do have one other thing and I, I would like to talk um about the policy of um Presidents' Day um being a holiday that this council um recognizes.
So the fact that we shouldn't have it on Presidents' Day, our council meeting, have it the Tuesday after?
Yes, it's, we have it the Tuesday after, according to the council policy manual.
Do we need to have a study session on that? Because I, I'm kind of in agreement with that. We should have it Tuesday after. I, I know that I brought it up in October, probably, or not in October, I thought I brought it up in January, but during the mayor managers meeting. So I'd be happy to have it the Tuesday after for Presidents' Day. Member Noonan Camp?
I support that as well, but can we actually just make it consistent? Would we be open to doing the same thing for Columbus Day? Like if we're gonna say federal holidays, we wouldn't just always do it the next?
Well, I kind of like what City Attorney Niles stated, Colorado doesn't recognize Columbus Day as the?
Right, but it's a federal holiday. And if we're gonna do Presidents' Day, which is not a city holiday, I'm just thinking for consistency also for the public, that when it's a federal holiday, we go to the next day if it's on a Monday.
Historically, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Do we? I understand. You said, you said that already, the same thing that it's historic, but it, 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 it kind of doesn't matter, right? Because it's a federal holiday. So your entire point earlier about if it's a federal holiday, we should be acknowledging it, it's a federal holiday. Um, so I would support moving both, but I would, it, if there's only council support for Presidents' Day, I would do that as well.
All right, thank you, Member Noonan Camp. I'd be in favor of just doing Presidents' Day and having it Tuesday after just because of precedents uh that we've done with Columbus Day. But anyone disagree with my viewpoint or does, do we want to do all federal holidays? Go ahead, Member Wright?
I, I agree with you.
Okay. Member Ward?
It might be a short study session item, but maybe we should discuss holidays in general. Um, I, I did note some heartburn over this council's ability to approve or not approve of, of certain holidays um relative to, to operations in the city.
All right, well, I, we could have it since it looks like there's members of council that want to have it, but I don't want to go into that deep in the weeds on this. But anyway, go ahead, uh, Mayor Protem.
I do, I would like to have the full, the full study session on it and, and council's authority in relation to that.
All right, looks like we have that as another study session item. Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Well, I'll just add, I, I don't need the council to approve holidays. I, I don't support that. But I um, if we're not going to, 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 cause we've also been breaking our own policies by meeting on Columbus Day, because it's a federal holiday and the policy says that we will not meet on federal holidays. So if we want to keep doing that, we also need to change the policy.
Yes, we do. Add that to your list, uh, City Attorney Niles. That's another one. All right, anything else from members of council? All right, city ma- oh, uh, Mayor Protem?
Everybody's getting their study sessions in, so I'm, I want to get mine in too. Um, I did have a citizen that reached out to me about our, our home, uh, home business, uh, home-based business laws. Um, one specifically, it says you can, you can sell about anything out of your house, but not if you make it outside of your house. She wanted to grow flowers and sell them uh as a home-based business. I think that should be legal along. And that's not, that's just one example of m- many things I should, I think we should kind of expand in our allowances for home-based businesses. So I'd like to see that come back as a study session topic.
Do we want a study session or a council request at this point? I'm just trying to figure out what the exact wording is on home-based businesses.
I want to study this because I know it's, I know that, I know that's illegal. It has been confirmed by staff.
Do we have three other members of council that want to study that topic?
No objection here.
All right.
No objection.
All right, no objection. All right, another study session item. All right, getting very productive here. All right, and city managers report?
Thank you, Mayor. It wasn't planned tonight, but it was a great illustration tonight of all of our engineering staff. We have over thirty engineers and um those who support them um very closely, because this week is Engineering Appreciation Week. And so um, that is a national um effort. And in honor of that, at a bright and early eight AM in the morning, in Mesa Verde, we'll be having breakfast with our engineering team. Um, so I'm sure there will be um some food if you wanted to stop by for that. Um, it's also public communicators, uh, well, later this week, on Saturday, is Public Communications Appreciation Week. And so um, I think that team, uh, which Chris Hargath leads in the commu- leads in the Communication Department, um, will also be doing um a breakfast on Friday, um, so we can get you information on that. But just really wanted to recognize, you know, particularly as tonight, as we hear just how critical, um, you know, the role of um, you know, engineers to our water system, our stormwater system, our wastewater system, our streets, our transportation system and network um as a whole, and the people who communicate all that to the public and engage them um in how we um go about that. So just want to give appreciation to them and I believe that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, city manager. All right, everyone, there is no mayor managers meeting this Wednesday because there is no meeting next Monday. See everyone the first Monday in March. Everyone, have a great evening.